Security protocols, both by Farmacan representatives, as well as an independent security consultant about Farmacan's security operations, proposed operations at this location. Did you hear those?
Yes, Counsel, I did.
Did you hear that testimony?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And did you also hear the testimony that that exceeds the state requirements for cannabis dispensaries?
That is correct.
Okay. And did you hear also the testimony from the security consultant that there is no data available that indicates that cannabis dispensaries increase crime in neighborhoods?
That's correct.
Do you disagree with that assessment?
Right now cannabis is an eight-month-old institution within the city. So right now we're going through uncharted waters in regards to cannabis and security. People, the gentleman that spoke in today, he'd be highly qualified to provide security for this company. Very impressed with their backgrounds and things of that nature. I'm sure they're gonna do a fine job. It's just that Maple Street is a bad street, based on the volume and the logistics and the weather and things of that nature. They haven't had any other businesses within that area to know how traffic, time of day, rerouting COVID. It's just an uncharted area and Maple is just a too small of an area to have this kind of additional volume of people. One thing you don't know, Counsel, is that I also lived at Dearborn and Chestnut for 15 years.
When was that, sir? When was that, sir?
I lived from 2000 to 2015, literally five blocks away.
And did you conduct traffic counts at that time?
No, I did not conduct traffic counts, but I'm a frequent resident of the neighborhood.
With the fact that this, did you learn, when you agreed to testify as an objector in this matter, were you aware of Farmacan's online reservation-only system?
No, I was not.
Did you learn about it today?
Yes, I did.
Does that change your opinion at all?
No, it does not.
Why is that?
Once word gets out that there's a medical, well, not a medical, but a marijuana dispensary on Maple Street, those people with bad intentions will have the perception of the reputation that it would be cash, a cash business based upon the amount of money that'll be made on a daily basis. This place is gonna be open seven days a week, correct?
Yes, it's going to be open seven days a week, but that's not, but you have zero, but let me just ask the question, please. Mr. Thompson, are you aware of, so there has been recreational cannabis in Illinois now since January 1.
Right.
Is that correct?
No.
Several, let me just ask my question, please. Do you have any data to support either from Illinois or from other states that have had recreational cannabis for a longer period of time to substantiate your claims that they are a target and that people carrying cash and all these other assumptions that you're making here today are true?
I'm not making-
Objection. The witness is not a expert witness. He's given his opinion based on his law enforcement background and his living in the area. He's not an expert.
I'm only asking him-
I know, yeah. He can answer the question still.
Do you have any data or information to support your claims?
Well, you're not, Counsel.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, who's next for you?
Briefly, Judge. Counsel asked you about foot traffic for bars and restaurants. If a bar or restaurant had the 1,000-person foot traffic that has been proposed here for the $25 million in sales, would you, would you object to having that restaurant or bar put in that area?
No, we're not.
Let me, let me re-ask you the question. You have no objection to cannabis, correct?
No.
You just, your objection is it's too small of an area, too much of a funnel.
Yes, correct.
So does it matter what business is there if it's that busy?
If it's that busy, it's gonna be a logistic nightmare for, for security.
I have nothing further.
Can I just re-cross, can I re-cross on one clarification?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson, you just said that if it was a busy restaurant, you would have no objection to it going here.
Objection, he very clearly misunderstood the question.
No, he very clearly did not misunderstand the question.
Counsel, I misunderstood. He's correct.
Okay. I think we're finished with Mr. Thompson.
We are. Mr. Thompson, thank you for sticking around. We appreciate it.
Counsel, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Murphy, who's next?
I'd like to take a quick five-minute bathroom break and then we'll go with our expert, Judge.
Okay. I'll give you till 9:10, please.
Perfect. You have to mute your microphone.
No, I can wait. I just want to make sure to have a time to speak.
Yeah, we'll get to everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll lower my hand. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I could get in because I got kicked off a little bit ago.
Yeah, we have you here.
Thank you.
John Coletti, did you have a question? Mr. Markopolis, did you have a question? You have to mute your mic.
Sorry about that. Will there still be time this evening for public commentary?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stevens, you had a question?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure that all homeowners were gonna be able to voice their opinion.
Yep, we're gonna get to everybody.
Thank you.
Cora Porter, are you ready to proceed? Okay. You're gonna attempt to reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Esposito, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Sol, are you present? Commissioner Sol is present. Mr. Murphy, are you back?
I am back, Judge. Our, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Who are you calling next?
Mr. Bud Kerwin.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kerwin, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Mr. Kerwin, could you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Sylvester J. Kerwin Jr. Kerwin, K-E-R-W-I-N.
And can you briefly describe your expertise and why you're testifying today?
Yes, I was asked to take a look at this particular property that has a application in for a special use for a cannabis dispensary located at 1214 West Maple Street in Chicago.
And did you have an opportunity to prepare a report regarding your finding?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you submitted that report, correct?
Yes.
All right. To the best of your knowledge, the board has a copy of report as well?
Yes.
Okay. A little bit of background, probably won't come as a shock to anybody. Have you testified before this board in the past?
That is correct.
About how many times?
Um.
Rough number.
Rough numbers. Couple dozen times over the last couple of years or so.
In fact, have you testified in front of the board today?
Yes, I have. Today was, I had three other cases.
And again, for how many years have you given your opinion regarding zoning and other related issues?
I've been a real estate appraiser for approximately 50 years. I've had my own business for a little over 40 years when I was awarded the MAI designation.
And what exactly is that?
The MAI designation is member appraisal institute.
Mr. Murphy, we recognize Mr. Kerwin's expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
You are familiar with the property located at 12 West Maple Street, Chicago, Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And again, for the record, what was the scope of your assignment?
The scope of my assignment essentially was to review the application for the proposed special use for a cannabis dispensary along the ground floor at that location.
And part of your process, were you able to physically inspect the area?
Yes, I was.
Were you able to inspect the areas surrounding 12 West Maple?
Yes, I was.
And that, and those, those physical inspections are part and parcel of your report?
Yes, they're all included in my report to, you know, observe and note the various land uses on either side of the subject property and specifically along Maple Street.
Okay. For the board, can you briefly describe the character of the subject area?
Well, briefly, Maple Street, as you've heard many times today, is a short, what we call a narrow street, runs east and west. It dead-ends into State Street. There is a retail building on the corner to the east, on the northwest corner of Maple and State Street. There's the Maple Nash Restaurant in that building there. Then going to the west of the subject property is a small vacant lot. Then continuing west, right on the four corners of Maple and Dearborn, there's all the high-rise apartment buildings there. On the south side of Maple Street, across from us is Newberry Plaza, but they do have Dubin's Restaurants right on the corner, then another restaurant right on the other side of the Dubins right there. So basically, in my conclusion, it's, the predominance of the character is residential as you go west from the subject property. I counted more than 1,300 dwelling units right up to that point, up to Dearborn Street there, and then-
Were you able to determine whether the proposed dispensary would be an appropriate and compatible, compatible with the site? Are we compatible with the neighborhood?
Well, after my research and investigations, I, my end conclusion was that it would not be an appropriate use because of all of the reasons you've heard before with related to traffic coming to this particular station, street. I might note that I actually, I measured the street. It goes curb-to-curb, it's 30 feet. And then when you take eight feet for parking on each side of the street, you have about a 14-foot-wide lane for traffic on Maple Street here.
So it's one-way, one-car?
One-way, one-car, eastbound. It dead-ends into State Street. There's a traffic sign, no traffic signal. I believe I heard it testified earlier. Most of the traffic from Rush Street has been shifted over to State Street, and it is more congested along in that area there. Let me see here. I, the other observation-
Well, I would say, does the proposed special use comply with all the applicable standards in the zoning ordinance?
No, it does not, in my opinion.
And can you further explain why?
Well, I know I heard it, but one of the things that's there, and I studied the zoning ordinance, and it does say in that, here's the magic word, exclusionary zone, which extends west of State Street. And I'm looking at that, we either are right on the west-
Objection, objection. Same objection as with Mr. Banks. The downtown exclusion zone is not relevant here. We're outside the scope.
Other factors, this is a unique character, this little neighborhood here, especially extending from State Street back to the west block or so. As I said, predominantly residential there. Other factors that I gave consideration to is that it's outside of it, but they're still in an area of influence. There's three schools within the neighborhood area. I counted, according to the schools, that there's over 2,600 students that attend those schools that are in the area. Yeah, 2,600. I, another factor is that just to the east of us, we're 50 feet west of State Street, but we're 116 feet from Mariano Park, right in around the restaurant area there.
Based on those locations, is it compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
No, I do not believe that it is.
And why is that? And why is that?
Because of the, as I've been told and read, the forecasted amount of traffic that would be coming to this particular location, that's one of the factors. It alters the character of the area. We go back again, I stood on several occasions, spent much time watching traffic at different times of the day, and it seems to back up on, on Maple Street right there.
And why is that?
Well, a number of reasons. There's usually vehicles parked on each side of the street most of the times of the day, and these are all included in photographs that I took in my reports. I noticed there is a valet service for the Maple Ash Restaurant almost in front of the subject. And most recently, I noticed that all of the restaurants, including Maple Ash, they have outdoor dining all along and including in front of our property into the west of there that's going on. The, the other factor is, was mentioned, the other uses in the area here, the crowding, the traffic, trying to make turns, especially a left turn onto State Street is extremely difficult, especially when it blocks up. I noticed there's a traffic light just to the north where they kind of pie shape into it between Rush Street, State Street, up near Elm Street there. I guess, and I might go back and say, another factor I considered, I did attend the community meeting early back in March at the very beginning, and I just observed in, and I have, someone tested, there was, you know, maybe hundreds of people at this, but I certainly observed that there was a strong concern from the neighborhood residents, you know, about the amount of customer traffic going and going to or coming from this proposed store. The other typical things we've heard and discussed here, security, from things I've read, to many of the customers maybe bringing cash to it, or then they're leaving with a product that could make them susceptible to crime. There was a big concern is that once they leave, the customers leave the store, they can, you know, go anywhere, right out in front, they could go to the park, they could go to Oak Street Beach, not too far away, or other areas. That's one of the main concerns, so that-
Mr. Kerwin, you've talked about, you've talked about additional traffic several times. You were able to hear their traffic expert say that a lot of people, only 25% of the people they expect, which is makes it a guess, to drive there. With COVID and the lack of use of public transportation, does any of that make sense?
No, it definitely is down. To me, they're probably, if people are gonna use this, they're gonna try to go and drive. I think I heard the alderman or one of the aldermen expressed that same thing, with many of the restaurants out. More things are, you know, to-go food, to-go products, I know stores are doing that, so you can pull up, they can bring it out, or maybe you can stop and run in and pick it up, however it works like that.
And then, I know you heard the earlier testimony, you were talking about security issues. Are you aware of the fact that, excuse me, there have been seven robberies of cannabis dispensaries since January 1st of this year?
I wasn't aware of the-
Objection, calls, calls for information that is not, is not in the record.
That's, that's called testimony, our new testimony, Counsel. We're putting it in the record.
Mr. Murphy, just repeat the question for me one more time?
Are you aware of the fact that seven, there is, that seven robberies of cannabis dispensary stores have occurred in this, in the Chicagoland area since January 1st, 2020?
Yes, I was gonna say, I read about it in newspapers, that there's been several break-ins.
Yeah, you don't have any personal knowledge or done any research on those?
No, only other than news articles and television reports.
Okay.
And what concerns does that give you regarding the safety of the area?
Well, that, that adds to the concerns that I can see that the residents are concerned with, is that if customers are coming to or leaving with cash or valuable product, that they're maybe more susceptible to robbery or being victim of, in that nature like that. From the more recent reports, it seems that the, what do they call them, the looters or so, they're trying to break into either high-end store to get merchandise, ATM machines where there may be cash.
Okay, I'm gonna, objection. I've tried to be quiet. I respect that it's a late night and I still have an opportunity to cross, but it's starting to feel like Mr. Kerwin's testimony is so far afield of what would be his level of expertise. It's, it's pure speculation. There's no foundation for his testimony. They're not establishing what he's relying upon.
I agree.
Witnesses can test, witnesses can testify on subject matter other than they're offered as an expert. They-
Mr. Murphy, what is the, I lost the trail of your questioning. Are you asking Mr. Kerwin what he thinks other people, how other people view?
No, what, what, I, the security, safety concerns in the area, Judge, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
But what his, his perception is of other people's perception of the safety concerns?
His perception.
His personal perception of cannabis, of security concerns arising from a cannabis dispensary?
Correct.
Does he live in this area?
He's done a report regarding the area, given his report.
But his report wasn't about security, right?
I can move on, Judge, I mean, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kerwin, can you describe the negative impact of a cannabis dispensary on the area surrounding Maple Street, Chicago, Illinois?
It was, again, you know, my conclusions there that this particular type of use at this specific location will be a impact, the character, the welfare of the area because it is perceived by what they're saying, up to maybe 1,000 customers per day, that amount of traffic coming onto this small, narrow street. To me, it adversely impacts the, the quality, quality of the surrounding neighborhood. As I mentioned, the residential character is the predominant character just to the west of the subject property by the number of units.
And then lastly, Mr. Kerwin, I want to talk about the promotion of pedestrian safety and comfort. Do you have an opinion as to whether or not the installation of a cannabis dispensary will improve or hurt pedestrian safety and comfort in the area?
Well, again, I think it's gonna, you know, maybe adversely impacted because of the amount of traffic coming on this small street here. I might suggest too, or that, what I typically do when I look at any zoning issue, whatever the proposed use is, I try to see, has it been located anywhere else, you know, in the neighborhood, in the city, within a reasonable area? And I did come across, well, there's at least seven of them, several, I think four have been approved, some nearby, one, and if I may ask, there's one over on 214 West Ohio Street. That, I went over and looked at that, took photos, I included them in my report, and the thing that I observed there, that was a one-way street eastbound. There's five lanes of traffic flow, and that means three for vehicles going through and two parking lanes there, and that's in the River North neighborhood, and that was approved. The next one that I noted, that was approved for cannabis store is at 436 North Clark Street. That's a one-way, southbound. That has five lanes. It's an 80-foot-wide right-of-way. Again, three traffic lanes, two parking lanes, so it makes the access for customers coming to those stores much easier, if you will. And, and I think I heard it mentioned, there's one I just observed, it's proposed, it's over at 60 West Superior Street. That's on four-
Objection.
What's the objection?
We're not discussing 60 West Superior.
What's your point on this one, Mr. Murphy?
He's, he's describing other locations and the characteristics that they share that the Maple Street location does not share.
That's fine. Keep going.
And quite frankly, I don't even care if they use addresses. It doesn't matter.
I, that was my intent. I tried to go to look at similar locations to see what it's like, and that's all that I'm talking about there. I noticed that there's a request for it, but on Superior Street, it's four lanes, 74-foot-wide right-of-way. That particular location has a site parking lot and a public alley for additional access, so I thought that was beneficial. Let me see, there was another one approved that is up at 1001 West North Avenue, it's along the southwest corner of North Avenue in Sheffield, and that is in a little convenience center, shopping center, and it's got onsite parking at that particular way.
So if I understand, the culmination of this testimony is that these sites are all preferred and very much distinguished, distinguishable from the Maple Street site, correct?
Absolutely. In my judgment, they're all superior. Absolutely, in my judgment, they're all superior.
You've heard the, you heard the testimony of Mr. Wolin earlier tonight, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
What did you disagree with in Mr. Wolin's testimony regarding the economics of the area and land use?
Well, I respectfully disagreed with his conclusions.
What about his methodology?
I, I did do some research, just as we always do, through the Appraisal Institute, has the Lum Library, as we refer to it, but I also researched the National Association of Realtors, referred to as NAR, and they put out a report titled Marijuana and Real Estate: A Budding Issue, and it was in February of 2020. Just briefly, that, the survey there, 27% of the Realtors that were surveyed had seen a decrease in property value near dispensaries, while 12% of the surveyed had seen an increase in value. Dispensaries are located typically in retail areas, typically in a freestanding building in a Class B or C location. Many dispensaries are not located in residential areas, as they said there, and then most individuals do not want to reside near a dispensary.
What about the, what about the testimony of Mr. Abuna?
If I may finish one more point with that.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Okay, excuse me, well, in that survey, most of those surveys were conducted in other states, Colorado, maybe California, and so forth, but as I understand it, in our Chicago market, dispensaries have only become legal for cannabis since January of 2020, and consequently, there's not been any adequate period of time to properly analyze the marketplace to observe any meaningful impact upon prices of properties that are located within the close proximity of dispensary. So in my judgment, the market is too new, untested, and there is no market evidence to support an opinion as to positive, negative impact upon the properties located as of this time.
In Chicago.
It takes several years to kind of work its way out, to see how this use impacts the properties in the immediate proximity of a cannabis dispensary.
What about the testimony of Mr. Abuna?
Well, as I heard it there, I wasn't certain if he really honed down on the traffic count of the number of vehicles on Maple Street, on Maple Street during various times in the, in the day, and to observe it, I, so I think he relied on data from, it sounded like, if I heard it correctly, from other studies, other reports at different times, so it kind of contradicts what we're hearing otherwise, and what I observed there, where there is congestion on Maple Street there.
Were you concerned that he didn't do his own independent research?
Objection, Mr. Kerwin, again, I'm trying to give everybody some leeway here, but Mr. Kerwin's not a traffic expert.
Really ask him a traffic expertise question.
I asked him a procedure question, are you concerned with his procedure as an expert?
I am concerned with what I've heard in some of the points that were brought up, it didn't seem like there was a study done thoroughly enough to see the impact on this particular street.
Were you concerned, were you concerned that he didn't talk to any of the restaurant owners about the traffic and the valet parking?
I would feel, as a traffic person, that would be part of.
Objection, this is speculation, now he's speculating that if he were a traffic consultant, this is what he would do.
That's sustained, let's keep going, Counselor, let's move on.
We'll move on, give me one second, Judge, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
To sum up, what would the effect of anywhere between 800 or 1,000 transactions be on that small area on Maple Street, how would that affect the area?
In my opinion, it would be devastating, it would just be overloading the area there.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Kerwin, who's next, for you?
Mr. Newberger.
Chair, just a question out of curiosity, do we know how many more witnesses?
How many are left on your list?
I think I have two.
Okay, and then we have a 70 something.
No, I think I have, no, four. I have Mr. Newberger, Ms. Alia, Mr. Melnick, and Mr. Calati.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who's Mr. Melnick?
Ace Hardware.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Newberger, could you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Matthew Newberger, N-E-W-B-E-R-G-E-R.
He's ready to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I'm sorry, what?
He's ready to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
I'm gonna try to expedite your testimony, thank you very much, I know you've been waiting hours, like everybody else has, so thank you for your time.
I'm a three-month-old daughter, now graduated high school, so we're good.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know why you're here to testify, we're basically, we're taking testimony on the effect of putting a commercial cannabis dispensary on Maple Street, right?
Correct.
And you were able to review the general criteria for special use regarding zoning and everything?
From what everyone's told me, and from what, you know, the information I've gotten, yes.
And in particular, we're looking for testimony on how the placement of, or installation of a retail cannabis dispensary would significantly adversely impact the area, correct?
Correct.
As well as not being compatible with the character of surrounding area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, can you just explain to the, to the board where you live, and briefly your educational background?
I live at 100 East Bellevue, my educational background is college, that's, you know, and.
How, how far do you live away from 12 West Maple?
Probably 120 feet.
All right, so you're close?
Yeah.
Okay, where are you employed?
I'm retired.
And what did you do prior to retiring?
I traded futures for 30 years.
Okay, and how long have you lived in the Gold Coast area?
I've lived in this apartment for 37 years.
Sounds like you probably have a lot of junk save up there, huh?
Unfortunately.
That'll work. Do you participate in any civic or neighborhood organizations, and if so, which one?
I do, I am the president of the Mariano Park Advisory Council.
And what exactly is the Mariano Park Council, or Advisory Council?
Well, it's, it's an elected, it's elected, it's an elected position by the residents of the neighborhood. I'm basically, I consider myself a caretaker of a really vital component in this neighborhood, I liaise between the residents, the people that use the park, the businesses, basically, you know, the area and its inhabitants.
And how long have you held that position?
Almost four years.
Okay, is it safe to say you've got your fingers squarely on the pulse of the area?
I talk to a lot of people, yes.
Okay, can you describe Mariano Park to the board, please?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a real special place, I mean, you know, I want to say first, you know, it's a neighborhood, it's where people live, and I think a lot of the people here forget that when they look at these ground stones around the neighborhood, like across the street from the park and the areas, that those are 100 and 120 years old, so families have lived in this area way before it became popular for people to visit to eat, all right, and it continues to thrive as a neighborhood where people raise their children. The park, well, the park is a park that everybody in this neighborhood uses or has used at one time or another. There are people that come to this park every day, and I mean every day, they come at night, different groups come at different times, the moms bring their children, enjoy gelato at night, for many people, this park is a place to come to see their friends, relax, and basically put the burdens of the day behind them, the park.
Objection, you know, I should have objected sooner probably, but, Mr. Chairman, you'd made a determination that mention of this park and the distance to the park was only going to be admitted if it was somehow relevant to the standards and how we don't meet them. So while I appreciate Mr. Newberger's passion and love for this park, I fail to see how any of this has any relevance to the special use standards, the mere existence of the park.
I agree, can we, Mr. Murphy?
We can, yeah, we can get to that. Is, you had mentioned, is it a busy park, is it a crowded park?
Yeah, it's a very crowded park, it's a crowded, it's a very crowded area.
Okay, well, and that's my point, Mariano Park, along with Maple Street and everything, is it a crowded area, or is it a pretty open area?
No, it's a very crowded area, it's a tiny little park.
You have heard the testimony, and I appreciate you hanging in there as long as you had, regarding significantly adversely impacting the general welfare of the community, how would the installation of a cannabis retail store affect, or significantly adversely impact or affect the general welfare of the area?
Well, you know, in quite a few ways, the congestion would be overwhelmingly negative for the streets, would be overwhelmingly negative for the people who live in the park, you know, before I was cut off, it would be overwhelmingly negative for their mental health, because the people that live in this community use the area to hang out and to relax. Pharmacons, what Jeremy, Jeremy said, Jeremy Unruh, said they expect to do 1,000 customers a day, planning 10 points of sale in the store, and we fully expect that as a for-profit store, that PharmaCan will do the most it can to maximize the amount of transactions that they have there. Their security, they speak of, is only security for the store, only for the store, because once the security leaves the store, they have to have absolutely no jurisdiction in the neighborhood, none, they can pick up garbage if they want to, they can do, they can make reservations if they want to, but basically, since they have no jurisdiction, that means the community has no security for.
But I want to talk a little, I want to talk a little bit about that security issue, when you had talked about the meeting at Dave and Buster's, where they set up to 1,000 transactions, 1,000 people a day. Will, to your knowledge, or anything you've heard, will PharmaCan be providing any additional protection for the residents based on the fact that they're bringing up to 1,000 people into that area every single day?
Of course not, PharmaCan, PharmaCan, that their security experts will be patrolling the neighborhood every two hours, and they'll call 311 or 911, you know, I could do that, I mean, they'll be picking up garbage and making sure people don't congregate, how are they gonna, how are they gonna do that? They're gonna tell somebody to move and then follow them around? I don't think so, no, their, their security means nothing to the neighborhood.
The, what about increased crime, or the possibility of increased crime?
Objection, I'm gonna object to this line of questioning, Mr. Newberger is a neighborhood volunteer, president of the park, he has no crime expertise.
I'm not looking for an expert opinion, and he's certainly able to testify to what he sees.
That's fine, let's keep it concise, though, please.
We did, we've talked about pedestrian comfort, safety, how would, if there's, if there's an increase in crime in the area because of an increase in traffic, how does that affect the comfort and safety of the pedestrians?
Well, I can tell you that the pedestrians are scared to death, and they're scared to death of anything else.
Objection.
I don't know what pedestrians you're talking about, Mr. Newberger.
Right.
When you say pedestrians, do you mean pedestrians who are in the area?
Let me, let me, let me say that again, the pedestrians, the people that live in the area, the neighbors, neighborhood.
Same objection.
You're making that statement on what, what basis exactly?
Is, the basis that I make this on is that I speak to hundreds of people a day about these things, I speak to the police officers three and four times a day, that patrol the neighborhood.
And is there a general concern about increased crime?
Absolutely.
And the increased crime is because of the installation of the cannabis store?
The increase, the increase of fear is because of the amount of people that the cannabis store will be, will be having, carrying cash and marijuana, yeah.
What about the increased traffic, or foot traffic, and an inability to maintain social distancing, are there concerns in the area about that?
Of course there are.
What are those concerns?
Is that something that you are asking hundreds of people a day and recording the results on, I mean, what's the?
I'm trying to expedite things, if you want me to lay foundations, Mr. Chairman, I can do that, I'm trying to, as these people have been waiting on the phone some over seven hours, I'm trying to expedite things a little bit.
At least a base foundation, yes.
Okay, so have you had the opportunity to have conversations with people in the neighborhood regarding social distancing and the addition of foot traffic and car traffic in the area?
I have.
And how many conversations would you say you have on a daily basis regarding that issue?
30.
And what, what is the sum and substance of those conversations?
As I said before, people are frightened.
And frightened of what?
What's the objection, Counselor?
It's this broad brush, I talked to 30 people a day about COVID, about their, you know, fears, we have no details about who he's speaking to, and question whether and what the relevance of people's fears over COVID have to do with a special use application for a cannabis dispensary.
Will you connect the dots for us on the relevance of COVID, please, Mr. Murphy?
The relevance to COVID is you're adding 1,000 people to a very small area during the course of the day.
I'm going to object, the testimony today was not that there's 1,000 people there today.
Hold on, finish your statement, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, you're adding up to 1,000 people a day onto a one-block street, there are very strict rules with respect to social distancing, which is approximately six feet, wearing masks, and all, everything that goes with it, and it's a legitimate topic of conversation is to, with the influx of what could be 1,000 people onto a one-block area, that it is not possible to maintain social distance, therefore putting everyone at risk. We're talking about pedestrian comfort, it says it right in the statute.
Okay.
Designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Yeah, but let me, so what you're asking. Yeah, but let me, so what you're asking, though, is his perception of other people's fears about that issue.
No, I'm not asking for his perception. I'm asking him, based on the conversations he's had with them, what are their fears?
Yeah.
Which are all hearsay.
Again, hearsay, but subject to one of the many exceptions to hearsay, one of which is effect on the listener, based on his role that he serves in the community.
Yeah, essentially, his, his takeaway from these conversations he's having with people about their views of having more people around in COVID.
Their concerns, correct.
Yeah. Okay, I, I would say, I'm not sure how much weight this, we're getting a little bit farther afield, so-
I can move it along.
Let's do that.
Okay, uh, do you understand the question?
Uh, why don't you repeat the question?
Okay, uh, with respect to the many conversations, I'm going to paraphrase here to get things moving. Uh, Mr. Newberger, uh, Mr. Newberger, the, uh, based on the conversations you've had with, uh, the people in the neighborhood on a daily basis regarding safety and security, COVID and social distance being one of those topics, what are their concerns relating to adding the influx of what could be a thousand people into one-block area?
Well, a lot of the older residents are, are pretty upset about it. So they don't know, they don't know where these people are going to go, and they're afraid that they're going to congregate in areas that, that weren't prior, that weren't crowded prior to the store coming in.
Other than what you have already testified here today, are there any other ways that, uh, the cannabis dispensary will significantly adversely impact the general welfare of the community?
Uh, yeah, there are. Um, Pharmacan wants to put a pot shop in a largely residential neighborhood on a one-way, already overcrowded, congested street with no parking? You know, how can this have anything but a negative impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
Kind of moving to my next question, in terms of compatibility or incompatibility, uh, do you have any thoughts on whether or not the dispensary is, uh, compatible or incompatible with the character of the surrounding area?
No, I don't think it's compatible with, you know, the surrounding area whatsoever.
Okay, for all the reasons that we have discussed previously, correct? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, one moment, uh, Mr. Chairman, I may be able to get rid of this witness.
Go ahead.
Mr. Newberger, uh, we, I've heard your testimony, and I appreciate the fact that you've stuck around this long. Are you in general just anti-cannabis? Or what is, this is just not a cannabis objection that you have, correct?
No, I couldn't care less about cannabis. It's legal. It doesn't make a difference to me if it's, 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 uh, dispensaries are legal or illegal. I mean, they're legal. It's a law. No, it's nothing to do with marijuana. It's nothing-
All right, so would you still object if another legal business but had that high volume tried to move into that same spot?
Yes, I would.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Newberger.
Thank you very much.
You're not leaving anywhere, are you?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I'm right here.
Okay.
Uh, we, Jenna Alia, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to flag for everybody, if you're planning on leaving, I need to know in advance, please, so Ms. McGuire can have an opportunity to cross-examine you.
Surely.
Ms. Alia, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Hi, Jenna. Um, I, I'm going to try to make this as brief as I can, and thank you very much for sticking around. I appreciate it. It's not easy. Uh, can you state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Yes, Jenna Alia, A-L-I-A.
Uh, Jenna, I really want you to punch the sucker out. Unfortunately, technology doesn't help us with volume all the time. So, like, like you're screaming at a Cubs game, okay?
Sure, no problem. Gotcha.
Okay, uh, you understand your testimony you're going to give today basically deals with the general criteria for special use regarding a cannabis dispensary on Maple Street?
Yes.
All right, and how it would have a significant adverse impact in the general welfare of the area?
Yes.
And, uh, how it's not compatible with the character of the area?
Yes.
And, uh, how it will not promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Do you understand that?
I do.
Okay, um, can you, uh, where do you live? I, you don't, and, you don't have to give me the exact address. You live in the area of, uh, Mariano Park?
I do. I live on Stone and Division, and I-
Okay.
I've been living in the neighborhood for my whole life.
Okay, and, uh, your educational background?
Um, I went to Loyola University for undergrad and UC Berkeley in California for law school.
Okay, uh, you said UC Berkeley?
Yes.
Okay, are you, uh, opposed to cannabis in any way?
No, I'm not. I went to Berkeley, and I voted for legalization in both California in 2016 as well as in Illinois.
All right, so your issue is not with cannabis, is it?
Not at all.
Okay, and, uh, where do you work?
I currently for my family business, Whispers Group, which includes Whispers at Mariano Park, Whispers at Oak Street Beach, and Cafe Michelle, which is on Randolph and the lakefront.
Okay, and exactly what are those types of businesses?
Uh, two of them are fully serviced restaurants and bars, and Mariano Park is a coffee shop and gelato stand.
And that's the Mariano Park located about a hundred feet away from 12 West Maple? Ever take?
Yes.
Okay. How many customers would you, and, and I'm going to basically confine my comments to your business, Whispers in Mariano Park, okay? How many customers would you say you serve on a regular basis there?
Um, I mean, it's important to differentiate between customers and patrons. The business itself, I'd like to say a few hundred per day. However, because of the fact that our business resides in a public park, we have many people that come from neighboring restaurants, coffee shops, or from their homes coming through our park and utilizing the space that we take care of.
When you say utilizing a space, uh, can you describe, uh, Whispers and, uh, the park in general to the board, please?
Sure. Actually, if it's okay with you, I'm going to use a Yelp review to do that. A cute outdoor cafe in the heart of the Gold Coast Mariano Park. Such a charming location cushioned in the center of restaurants, lounges, rooftops, and bars. That was from July fifteenth, twenty eighteen. It's public. We have about, I'd like to say, six or seven tables located in the park. Those tables are open to the public. We cannot exclude any customers or people from any, but, and, from, we can't exclude anyone from the neighborhood, so anyone can come and sit down at our tables. Many times they come and they sit around the fountain. At the beginning of COVID, when the city wasn't allowing us to have our tables out, actually, people were bringing their own chairs and tables and sitting out in the park, just because it essentially is their backyard.
So that's the difference between patron and customer?
Yes. Customers come and they buy our gelato, they drink our coffee, a lot of them sit, some of them take it to go. It really just depends. Depends on the day, depends on the season, depends on a lot of different factors.
Okay. Uh, well, you, you basically explained the Whispers Cafe in the park, what it, what it means to the neighborhood. It's, it's basically everybody's backyard. Is that fair enough?
Um, yeah, it is. I mean, I, I like to think of it as the hub of the neighborhood. Uh, my family and my father, they, we tended to the gardens, we clean up the park. Uh, we police it in a lot of ways, too. We go, in many ways, outside the bounds of our contract duties just because of how long we've been there and how dedicated we are to the neighborhood.
And then, so your employees will clean up trash or cigarette butts and everything in the park?
Hold on, Mr. Murphy, can we move to the criteria?
That's where we're going to, I've just, uh, so in essence, your, uh, your employees help clean up the park, pick up trash, cigarette butts. They just kind of keep the place nice?
Yeah, we actually have employees that do that full-time, um, as well as the employees that are working there.
Okay, now, um, we're going to kind of get to the meat and potatoes part now. The proposed dispensary, how will it have a adverse impact on the general welfare of the community?
Well, first of all, I think that it's going to bring in a lot of traffic coming off of Maple. Even though the dispensary itself is outside of that exclusion zone, its traffic necessarily feeds into our, like, essentially our right-of-way in the areas of traffic that we utilize as well as our customers. It has to feed that way, right? Everybody goes east. And then on top of that, with the restrictions placed, um, after COVID, it's, it's becoming increasingly more difficult for us to receive deliveries at our business, whether that be from Amazon or a restaurant company, or even from like our family members that are running things. Especially important for us because the size of our business is so small, being, you know, it's a, it's a historical monument. We can't really build out, so there's not a lot of space in there. So we have, we require regular delivery to the business in order for us to be able to serve our patrons.
So, so if you added about, up, up to a thousand people in that little area, would you have pro, would you have social distancing concerns?
I, I already have enough social distancing concerns, and it's especially difficult, again, because of the fact that we are a public park. We can't really tell people where they can and can't go. Having more people in the area is just going to make it more difficult for us. Actually, after like all of this COVID stuff, and because of the fact that Mariano Park and the surrounding restaurants in the surrounding area was essentially one of the first socialized zones opened up after the, the onset of the pandemic and the lockdown, you see, we've seen a wave of like an increase in the amount of traffic that we've had in the area significantly. Um, and as a result of that, our alderman, as well as, as the Chicago Park District, reached out to us and requested that we close up our tables and chairs on the weekends, which we complied with because we understand that it's a necessary, uh, aspect of our business to operate and the surrounding businesses to operate in a safe and effective manner.
And that's because of just so much congestion, correct?
Too much.
Okay, what about, um, what about crime? Do you have any concerns about, uh, increased crime?
I do. Um, first of all, the fact that it's a cash-based business, and I know that Pharmacan does have a pretty extensive platform for their online ordering system. But also, I know that people that are my age, which I'm around twenty-nine years old, people that I think are probably like buying marijuana more frequently than maybe older generations that you guys are accustomed to hearing from. I don't want my, like, banking information going into the system, especially knowing that, you know, weed's still federally legal. I love it. I'm fine with it, but like, I don't want there to be a system to track me by, especially because of the fact that I'm administering it.
So your, your issue is not with cannabis. Your issue is it, it just doesn't belong there?
I love weed. I'm fine with weed in many, many ways. It's just in this specific area, this specific use, as applied to this area, it just does not fit.
Well, and that goes to my, that goes to my next question, is that the proposed dispensary is incompatible with the character of the surrounding area?
It definitely is. Um, and, I mean, if, if it's okay for me to jump back for a second to the security, I, I definitely want to talk about the fact that, you know, we have a really serious problem in the area with people panhandling, um, especially with the looting and the crime that's gone, like, gone on recently, like, it's been increasingly more dangerous, especially at night in the area, and our, like, our staff have taken on a lot of roles, including making sure that the neighborhood stays safe for the people that come in, come in there. And it's, it's been increasingly more difficult for them to do, especially because some of the girls that work by us are like nineteen years old, and they don't really know how to stand up to men outside smoking cigars, or, you know, people coming in, like, from all over the place, drunk from the bars and stuff like that. It's already really hard on us, and I think, I believe that having a dispensary right down the street that, again, it feeds traffic into our area, into our park, is going to make that role much more difficult, and it's going to cause us to have to expend um, many more, like, much more resources than we would have, and we're already just a coffee shop. We're not some kind of big steakhouse bar. It's a small operation that we put a lot of effort and love it to.
And, and so that'll detract from you economically. It'll cost you money?
It will.
Um, and what about promoting pedestrian safety and traffic by adding additional counters to that very small area? Is, is that make people feel safer or more comfortable on the street?
I mean, I don't think so. I, so I used to live, like, I, I just moved to where I am now last year, but I was at 1122 Clark, that's Clark and Elm, and I used to ride my bike to the park all the time. And even back then, before COVID, before the, like, significant increase in traffic, sometimes it would take me to get from Dearborn to the park, like, five minutes, and it's like, it should be like not even two minutes, like, it would be-
Mr. Chairman, um, I have to object. Again, I apologize for delaying the proceedings here, but we've now had several witnesses that are saying, A, the same thing, all without any substantiation. We're hearing the same opinions. We're hearing the same opinions over and over again.
My personal experience biking to the exact location, passing in front of the dispensary that is at issue, is completely wrong.
Well, it, again, the difference here, we have a small store owner, not a big steak place or anything like that. She's not giving the exact same testimony because her perspective is very different than the other store owners in, uh, in the area.
Especially because I do it multiple times a day, whether it be by vehicle, by foot, or by bike.
So, um, we are covering the same set of issues that we've covered often, so I appreciate-
No, no, and, and I'm just about finished.
Yeah, let's, let's do it a little bit.
Actually, you know what? I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay, Ms. Alia, I did not get your address. Can you repeat it?
Yes, sixty-five-
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with respect to addresses, uh, she is a single female living alone. She gave the corner. Do you actually need an actual address?
Uh, yes, that's been our stand-
Sixty-five-
Then Jenna, go ahead.
Sixty-five East Scott Street, and the location of the business is ten thirty-one North State Street.
Okay, Ms. McGuire, I'm going to shift a little bit and say that after, um, Mr. Murphy finishes with his, um, main directs, if you want to cross-ex those folks before we move on to the rest of the public testimony, so that we don't potentially lose any of those witnesses in the interim, you tell me if you want to do that as opposed to coming back at the end.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'd be happy to. I just want to make sure that I do get an opportunity to cross. I don't know that I'm going to cross everybody. I will tell you that much, but-
Why don't we do this? So, Mr. Murphy, you have, what, three or four more?
I have, uh, Mr. Melnick and Mr. Coletti.
Okay, why don't we go through those two, and then, Ms. McGuire, if you want to, uh, cross-examine any of the folks he's done so far, we'll take an opportunity to do that then, so they can leave, and then we'll go on to public testimony, and in that process, you can cross-examine anybody as they go. Does that work?
Fair enough. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
We, we'd like to call Mr. Ma, uh, Melnick.
Do we have Mr. Melnick here?
Yes, he's, uh, we just promoted him. Just a few seconds, he'll be able to talk.
Can you hear me okay?
There we go. Yes. Do you swear to this proceeding?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, and, and, Mr. Chairman, I will move expeditiously.
Please do.
Mr. Melnick, can you state your names, spell your last name for the record, please?
Sure, it's Jeremy Melnick. M as in Mary, E L, N as in Nancy, I C K.
And, uh, where do you live?
Uh, seven oh one Charlemagne in Northbrook, but my business is at twenty-four West Maple in Chicago.
And what is your business?
Uh, we are an Ace Hardware store.
And how far are you from the proposed cannabis dispensary at twelve West Maple?
I don't know, twenty-five feet.
So, very close.
Next door.
Okay. You understand we're here to talk about general criteria for special use to the, uh, regarding the, uh, placement of that cannabis, uh, dispensary at twelve West, uh, Maple?
Yes.
Okay. Briefly describe your educational background.
Sure, I have an undergrad degree at University of Iowa and a master, I'm, and, in finance and accounting, and I have a master's from DePaul in finance and accounting.
How long have you, uh, had the Ace Hardware at, uh, near Maple Street?
It's been in my family for seventy years. Uh, it's been in that location since nineteen eighty-eight, uh, and I've been working it full-time since, uh, for twenty-two years.
And, uh, so it's safe to say you've got a pretty good idea what goes on around there?
I grew up there, yeah.
Okay. On a daily basis, how many customers?
About three hundred.
Weekly, around fifteen, sixteen hundred?
Uh, actually, about twenty-one hundred. We're open seven days a week.
One. Uh, and what is the typical transaction time, uh, for my customer stepping into your business to leaving your business?
If they're a destination customer, it could be under ten minutes. If they're getting, buying something larger, it could be up to a half an hour.
Okay, and, uh, how many, uh, points of sale do you have in your hardware store?
Two.
Okay, you don't have ten, do you?
No.
Okay. What percentage of your customers drive, uh, and how many are pedestrians?
Probably less than ten percent of them drive. Uh, most are, the rest would be pedestrian. Uh, we offer delivery service as well to get the customers that can't get to us.
What about, do you, do you aware of anyone's taking public transportation in this day of COVID?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Let's get to the actual, well, can you describe to the board what you had to do in particular to get parking spots in front of your store?
Uh, we had to work with the city to get a loading zone, which is, and work with, uh, the landlord and the health food store next to us, so we- We had to work with the city to get a loading zone, which is, and work with the landlord and the health food store next to us, so we have a loading zone that's about, they can hold three to four cars and we pay an annual fee just to have that there, so some of our customers can park and so we can actually use our truck to load for deliveries for our other customers as well.
And, and I'm sorry, I missed it. Do you pay extra for that?
Yes, we do.
And how much do you pay a year for that?
About $1,500 a year.
And with respect to your deliveries, if we added several hundred, 800 to 1,000 transactions and the cars that go with it, how is that can affect your ability to get deliveries in your store?
It's going to impact us for the fact that it's hard enough to get the trucks, our truck down the street and it'll impact our loading time, so it'll, it'll delay our ability to get our deliveries to our customers on time as well.
And, and how would it affect your business if you aren't able to get inventory?
Well, it'll hurt us badly if we can't get inventory in. But.
And with respect to patrons, patrons parking, I'm assuming it's the shoppers at your Ace Hardware that use your parking spots, correct?
Well, we can't technically control who parks there because it's a loading zone and you have to use your flashers. We hope that it's for our customers and we, we tried to regulate it over the years, but technically anybody can park there.
So, if you added many, many, several hundred, if not 1,000 transactions with the, with the car traffic that goes with it, is it likely that those cars are going to park in your spot?
Definitely.
Objection, that objection, that has not been the testimony in the case, that there is going to be 1,000 cars.
There will be an increase in cars.
I, I said 1,000 transactions. And that, that was testimony from the Vice President.
And I fail to see how that would impact his loading zone.
It impacts us now because with, even with the prior businesses that were there, we were constantly fighting with the valets and those customers parking in our loading zone and they're not going to have the use that, that a cannabis dispensary would have.
So what's going to happen in terms of the use of those parking spots in your loading zone for your customers if we add all the customers from the cannabis store?
Well, hopefully they'll stay dedicated to me, but they're going to have to park somewhere else or they'll get frustrated and go to another hardware store.
Right. And then how does that affect your bottom line?
It obviously hurts it.
There you go.
Let's keep moving, Mr. Murphy.
Are there ways that the dispensary will significantly adversely impact the general welfare of the community?
There are. Again, you know, you're looking for the number of people there that are potentially not my customers or not from the neighborhood. And it's just, it could potentially have an increase on people in my store that are not really shopping, they're just, they're kind of killing time. I think it's just two, two different sets of customers for us.
Okay, not necessarily people buying from your hardware store?
Correct.
Objection, this is speculation.
What about, I don't, yeah, let's, let's go to the next question.
What about the increase in traffic?
As I said, the increase.
I apologize, a bad question. What about the increase in automobile traffic in your area, given COVID, given the shutdown of Rusty and given the additional transactions that'll occur with the cannabis store?
We, we're getting.
Objection, none of these people, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Covered this topic, let's keep going.
All right. You're asking me to expedite my questions. I'm trying to do that. I am purposefully not asking foundational questions to get to the answers that we're all looking for. If I keep hearing objections, to maintain the record, I will be forced to ask all those questions. So which way are we going to do this?
I don't want you to expedite the foundation questions. I want you to not ask redundant questions.
I appreciate that.
Covered loading zones, we've covered one way on Maple. We're hearing the same thing. We, we got it. Let's, let's move. Give us something, give us.
Okay. Do you have any security issues regarding the additional traffic and transactions that occur on Maple Street?
Well, if it's, yes, we would. If we, if you're looking at, under the current condition with COVID, we still can only limit the number of people that are in our store at a given point in time. We're only allowed per the executive order to only have five people per thousand square feet in our store. So based on our size, we can only have 30 people in our store at a time. The rest of them have to wait outside.
How is the proposed dispensary incompatible with the character of the neighborhood?
It's just a different business that, that doesn't complement us, doesn't complement the neighborhood.
Are you anti, is, is your issue, you're anti-cannabis or is your issue, it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood?
It just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. I have no problem with cannabis.
And how does it not fit in the neighborhood?
It just doesn't blend with what the neighbors are, are looking for and just the character of the neighborhood. You have a hardware store, a drugstore, a grocery store, convenience store, and restaurants and it's, it's, it's a good balance in a neighborhood.
Okay, and it's something we have not discussed, nor has anyone discussed, at least in my thinking. You get your deliveries through the back alley?
I actually get my deliveries on Dearborn through.
All right, can you discuss the shape of the back alley that is shared by you in this proposed cannabis dispensary?
It's an L, L-shaped with two different entrances on it.
Okay, is it, is it fit for multiple car traffic or just one, one car, one truck at a time?
One car, one truck at a time.
How easy would it be to clog up that alleyway with traffic from the dispensary?
Very easy.
Objection, speculation.
I've been there for a long time, but, okay.
One, one car could stop up the whole thing?
Yes.
I have nothing further for this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Melnick. Who's next, Mr. Coletti?
I have Mr. Coletti.
Okay. Do we have Mr. Coletti still with us?
Is it John Coletti?
It is John Coletti.
Yes, it is. I'm here. I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Coletti, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do. I do.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Coletti, could you state your name, spell your last name, please?
John Coletti, C O double L E double T I.
And where do you live and where do you work?
I, I live in Lincolnwood, Illinois, 6,500 North Keating. And I'm, I work between 1024 North Rush, 1028 Northwest and 18 East Bellevue, Gibson's, Hugo's and Lux Bar and there's a couple of other ones.
And what is your role with respect to Lux Bar, Hugo's and Gibson?
I'm the managing partner for, with the Gibson's Restaurant Group.
Safe to say that as the managing partner of the Gibson's Group, you're on that corner near 12 West Maple? Many hours during the course of the week?
I've been there for 28 years, so I believe I've been around quite often.
Okay, well, let's, let's hope another 28 years, right?
I, amen, hallelujah.
You got it. All right. You've heard everything. We're here to talk about the general group, general criteria for special use, correct?
Yes, sir.
Farmacan wants to put a cannabis dispensary at 12 West, 12 West Maple. And how would placing a cannabis dispensary on Maple Street adversely affect the neighborhood?
Well, as I go by what, what's been stated in, I'll start with the first meeting over on, it was Dearborn Street up at one venue and the discussion about the number of customers. If we were held in the same, if the cannabis store was held in the same, what is the word, laws that our restaurants are, are held on, we need X amount of parking. We need the secure parking for our customers and for our, to keep cars off the street. We, we live on a, and work on a street that has two curb lanes and the two center lanes. We are pressured to keep cars off the street. So over the years, we've secured parking for our cars in the Two East Oak building, two floors and the school that's not there. We lease the garage at night from that school that's not there at Oak and State Street, the one they talked about that's not there, but we do lease the garage from them.
So in some, the, the installation of a cannabis dispensary would have significant traffic impact on the area?
Well, just, just figuring. You're talking about a thousand customers. Not everybody's going to, excuse me?
Objection. I'm objecting, sir. Again, these are all, none of these witnesses has been a traffic expert. Everybody else, everybody is saying the same thing.
My 28, my 28 years in the neighborhood.
Excuse me, Mr. Coletti, Mr. Coletti, please let me finish my objection and then the chairman gets to rule on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is all, you know, speculation based on 1,000 customers and making up traffic counts. That's all it is. Witness after witness after witness.
I'll sustain that. Counselor, let's, let's move on.
My apologies.
Mr. Coletti, can you describe how bad the traffic is in the area as it exists right now?
Well, with the Rusty closure, it's been extremely interesting, the rerouting of valets for the, for the hotel. Gibson's Hugo's Lux, Pancake House, Carmine's and Tavern. We've been valeting in a new valet zone that we applied for in March for us, but we're using it for valeting cars. It's, it's been extremely difficult and because of my association with a couple of other associations in the city, I'm quite civic-minded. I'm on the board of the North Michigan Avenue Association and a few others. There is talk with CDOT and with the Chicago Police Department about rerouting Oak Street due to the civil unrest going on in the city. The civil unrest has caused us a lot of headaches also, a lot of trauma, a lot of loss of business.
Objection. Again, I apologize for objecting. I don't know where this testimony is going or how it is particularly pertinent to the question that you asked.
Traffic is affecting the area and she doesn't like the answer.
A lot of time.
Mr. Murphy, you can tone that down.
I don't have to tone anything down. You were objecting just.
Mr. Murphy, I muted you. I have muted you, so I will just say for everybody, yes, we need to tone it down and we will be respectful of everybody.
Yes, sir.
Continue your questioning, please.
Yes, so Mr. Coletti.
Yes, sir.
What, you've described the, is it safe to say the traffic in the, in the area now around Maple Street and Gibson's is a mess? Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and while you are not a traffic expert and while you did not go to school to become a traffic expert, being there for 20 plus years and being there every day for 20 plus years, if traffic was added, if cars were added, what would happen to the traffic situation around Gibson's and Maple Street?
Traffic would come to us, actual stop. There is, there is now, no room for the volume of a 25-foot store that's going to bring in 1,000 people to, here, just for instance, let's say there's, they expect 1,000. They're not going to get 1,000 cars. Say they're going to get 200 cars. Where are you going to put them? On top of that, where are you going to put Uber and Lyft?
There's been no testimony that there's going to be 200 cars.
It's a great estimation. In my 28 years of valeting cars in my neighborhood, I'm not saying that I'm a, a traffic engineer, but boy, I've seen more in my 28 years than probably more people in this neighborhood have seen. And most of the people in this neighborhood rely on us because of how we operate our business. The people have asked us and told us what they want. We've done it.
Let's move on from traffic.
I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Coletti, how is the installation of the cannabis dispensary incompatible with the, or not compatible with the character of your neighborhood?
It's, 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 we live in a neighborhood. You just said the word. We, we, we understand that our business comes from our neighbors and we live and work in a neighborhood. I work in a neighborhood and I know it and I'm very respectful and so are all my partners and my cohorts of the restaurants in that neighborhood. You don't see us cleaning the streets in the morning for nothing, the sidewalks. You don't see us policing ourselves day to day, seven days a week, 365 days a year because, you know, it's a nice, we do it because we're in a neighborhood and we give respect back to the people that live there and they also support us for that also.
Is it safe to say that a cannabis dispensary would have a significant negative impact on your area?
It has no need in our neighborhood and I'm not a prude. Don't get me wrong. It's illegal. We understand it's a legal item.
Is your issue with, is your issue with cannabis or that it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood?
It does not fit in the neighborhood.
At that particular location on Maple Street, correct?
Exactly.
I have nothing further for this witness.
Thank you.
And I believe, Mr. Murphy, that's your set, right?
That's my set.
Okay, so Ms. McGuire, do you want to cross-examine Mr. Banks, Mr. Kerwin, Mr. Newberger, Ms. Alia, Mr. Coletti or Mr. Melnick? Ms. McGuire, do you want to cross-examine any of those witnesses?
I'm so sorry, I was muted. Apologies. I would like to cross-examine Mr. Banks, Mr. Kerwin and Mr. Newberger.
Okay, in that order?
I'll go Newberger, Kerwin, Banks.
Okay. Mr. Newberger, you are still under oath, sir?
Yes, sir. Let me just get unmuted. Okay, there we go.
And I just have a few questions. I will move this along quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
First off, Mr. Newberger, you indicated you live at 100 East Bellevue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you state that that's 100 feet away from the subject location?
I, 125. I don't, I don't know how long, how, how close it is, but it's, it's within 150, 1200 feet.
100 East Bellevue is almost 1,000 feet away. Would you be surprised to know that?
1,000 feet away, 100 East Bellevue? Really?
So you have been pretty active in, in speaking to the press. No, I get to ask the questions.
Okay, I don't, I don't think that's correct. Go ahead.
You've been pretty active in, in talking to the press about this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
Objection, beyond the scope of direct examination.
Where are you going with this, Counselor?
I'm going with the statements that he's made in the press relative to this dispensary in the neighborhood, directly to the statements he's made.
Same objection. I've never even mentioned the word press or press conference or anything like it. This is way beyond the scope. She had an opportunity to call this witness in her case and she chose not to.
Yeah, that's, that's, go ahead. Move on, Counselor.
I'm sorry, did you sustain that?
I did.
Okay. All right, so let me ask you. Do you believe that besides the traffic conclusions and the congestion conclusions that you reached a little earlier, do you believe that this, that there are that this cannabis dispensary would attract people that you don't want to see in the neighborhood?
Nope.
Have you ever made statements to that effect?
No, not that I, not that I, not that I recall, not.
Have you ever seen intoxicated people in Mariano's Park?
Objection, beyond the scope of direct. I've never mentioned anything about intoxicated people.
He waxed poetic about the park and how he's there and he talks to people hours at a time every day. Surely he can ask, answer questions to whether or not he's ever seen anybody intoxicated in the park.
No, I've never, no, actually exactly not. You had this opportunity, or I should say counsel had the opportunity to call this witness in her case in chief. She chose not to. She cannot go into areas that were not dealt with on direct examination. The word intoxication was never mentioned.
Sustained. Keep going, Counselor.
All right, I have nothing further of this witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Newberger.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerwin, you're next.
Yes, sir.
You are still under oath.
Yes, sir.
Where is Mr. Kerwin? Is he on the phone? Because I can't see him on video. I was just curious.
He's here to answer your question.
Yeah, he's here. He's not on.
Okay. I just want to make sure he was on because I couldn't see him.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of questions. I won't belabor this. At your deposition, I asked you how often you testified on behalf of clients at the law office of Sam Banks.
Again, objection, beyond the scope of direct examination. Nothing was ever mentioned about his working with Sam Banks in the past.
In cross-examination, I can certainly establish bias. In cross-examination, I can certainly establish bias.
No, no, you can't. You can't delve into areas that were not touched in direct examination. Like the other witness, Counsel had an opportunity to call this witness adversely. She chose not to. You can't go into it now.
I would ask for some leeway in light of the ZBA process that has always been conducted in this manner. We are not in Mr. Murphy's courtroom.
Well, again, she's asking for leeway now when she was trying to hold me to certain objections that she was making for regarding hearsay. You can't have it both ways. We're either relaxing them, or we're not.
What was your question, Counselor, Mr. McGuire?
You know what? Let it go. That's fine. We'll let it go. Mr. Kerwin, do you have any training or expertise in traffic consultancy?
No, I do not.
Are you a traffic engineer?
No, I am not.
Have you ever taken any coursework in traffic engineering?
Not that I recall.
Did you conduct any traffic counts at the subject location?
I observed the amount of traffic on Maple Street, and I took photographs of it, and it's in my reports.
But no traffic counts, is that correct?
I did not count all exact cars.
Okay. And did you review any traffic studies in relation to, relative to this project?
I did see one in some of the material provided, and I looked through it, yes.
And is that the KLOA traffic study?
Yes, I believe that's it.
Okay. And you testified that you disagreed with its conclusions, is that correct?
On the traffic, on the traffic study, is that what you're asking?
That's, yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
But again, you have...
I'm saying, based upon the testimony I heard today.
So, you disagreed with the conclusions of an expert traffic consultant based on the testimony that you heard today?
Yes, that's correct.
You are an appraiser, right?
Yes.
An appraiser's value properties, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Did you come to any conclusions in your report as to the impact on property values as a result of the special use?
No, I did not. I was not asked to arrive at evaluation of the property.
But you did mention property values in your report, did you not?
Yes, that's part of the assignment, like I mentioned. I went and examined other similar-located uses. I also did research studies that I mentioned, a NAR study, and I referenced those.
Right. So, let's talk a little bit about that NAR study. Is that an actual study?
I'm just looking for it. It was a report called "The Marijuana in Real Estate," a budding study, a budding issues in February 2020.
And that was a survey, actually?
I believe that it was, yes.
Right. It was a survey of realtors, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Do you know what the response rate of that survey was?
I do not have it in front of me here.
Would you be surprised if it was less than 3%?
I would have to check back with it. I thought it was more than that.
But you don't, you're not aware of any data about adverse, about adverse impacts on property values as a result of cannabis dispensaries, is that correct?
As I testified, because it is so new, it only became effective in January 2020. Enough time has not passed in order to ascertain any impact positively or negatively on those properties that are in a close proximity of a dispensary.
Right. I realize that that's what you said today. That is not what, you made no mention of an inability to make those conclusions in your report due to the newness of the industry in Illinois, did you?
No, I did not go into it.
Right. And did you not state in your deposition that you were not aware of any data that showed an adverse impact on property values as a result of cannabis dispensaries?
Objection, inappropriate foundation. If she's going to impeach him with a prior inconsistent statement, she has to give it to him.
Fine. So, hold on, just bear with me while I pull it out. So, Mr. Kerwin, you remember, or, Mr. Kerwin, did you sit for a deposition on August 13, 2020?
Yes.
And at that time, did I ask you several questions about your report?
I believe you did, yes.
So, I'd like to turn to, it's our Exhibit O, is it? I don't know if there's anybody around anymore who can put Exhibit O up on, no, Exhibit P up on the screen at this point, but hopefully, the ZBA members can.
We have it.
Just going to the right page. Page 30 of the deposition transcript, Mr. Kerwin, do you see it?
I do not have a copy of that, and I don't see it. Oh, maybe it's coming up here.
Oh, thank you.
There it is.
Can you go to page 30, please? So, can you see, actually, right there, if you could scroll down just a little bit on that page, right at line 11? I asked you, are you aware of any studies that have found that cannabis dispensaries cause an adverse impact on neighboring property values? Do you see that, Mr. Kerwin?
I do see that, yes.
And then you asked me to repeat that question again? Do you see that?
Yes, I do see that there.
Okay. And then you responded with the NAR study, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If you could scroll down to page 31, please, of the deposition transcript. So, at question three, I asked, but you are not aware of any data to that effect, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And at line five, you replied, no.
No.
Thank you. Just give me just a moment, just to see if I have any more questions of Mr. Kerwin. Oh, one more thing. This will be my last question. In your, in your report and in your testimony today, you indicated that the character of the neighborhood is residential to the west, is that correct?
Yes.
What about the character of the neighborhood to the north, south, and east?
Well, I referenced that because the cannabis dispensary is on Maple Street.
I understand. I'm just, but you referenced the character of the neighborhood to the west from the subject site as being residential. And I'm asking you whether or not you reached a different, what conclusion you may have reached about the character of the neighborhood to the north, south, or east.
Well, I recall, I believe those neighborhoods are mixed-use, residential, some retail restaurants, but I really concentrated on Maple Street, because that's where the proposed use is.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Kerwin.
Thank you, Mr. Kerwin.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gray?
He's here.
You're still under oath, Mr. Venning.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Banks, how are you?
I'm well.
Spare me with me while I get my thoughts together here. You indicated in your testimony that you do represent cannabis dispensaries, is that correct?
My firm does, yes.
Right. Does your firm also represent other cannabis companies? Such as cultivators?
I don't believe we're representing a cultivator now.
What about craft grow, infusers?
We, again, we may. You know, I have partners, and they may be handling that. Yes, ma'am.
But you definitely do represent cannabis dispensary operators, is that correct?
My firm has in the past, yes.
And are you compensated, well, currently as well, is that correct?
And, yes.
And is your firm compensated for those services?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you, is there a, do you flat fee those applications approvals?
Objection, has nothing to do with the direct examination, the fees that he charges, whether they're flat or otherwise.
But you aren't compensated... Okay, go ahead.
You might answer the question?
Yes, please do.
We have the arrangements of flat fees, retainer base, that it depends on the matter.
I'm asking specifically as to the cannabis dispensary applications.
Generally, generally, flat fees.
And how much are those flat fees?
Same objection, has nothing to do with direct examination.
Ms. McGuire, are you going towards credibility or something? What are you going with this line?
Yes, I'm going to credibility and financial benefit from cannabis companies.
But that has nothing to do with this case. The fact that he represents other people or other companies has nothing to do with this case.
Has everything to do with his credibility.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, the question?
What are, how much do you charge for those flat fees?
Depends on the, depends on the client, depends on the matter, it would be $20,000.
I'm sorry, how much?
$20,000.
And is that on the low end or the high end?
I'd say that's right in the middle.
You mentioned a couple properties that you have in this neighborhood. Have you ever offered up those properties for a cannabis dispensary?
Objection, that has nothing to do with direct examination.
No, but it goes to discredit the basis of the testimony he gave directly. It's fine, continue.
Have I ever offered the properties that my family owns to a cannabis dispensary?
Yes.
No.
So, you indicated you've been practicing...
I have tenants. I, excuse me, to be clear, I have tenants in those properties. Well, but it's the, it's the, it's the conclusion to my answer.
Thank you. So, you've indicated for your entire career, I believe, that you've been a zoning attorney, is that correct?
Just about my entire career, yes.
Okay. So, you're therefore very familiar with the zoning ordinance?
I am.
Do you know what this particular site is zoned?
I believe it's DX7.
And what does that mean?
It's a downtown district that has a 7FAR.
A downtown mixed-use district, is that correct?
Sure.
Which would be different from a DR district.
DR does not, DR is only residential.
Correct. Is parking required for a cannabis dispensary in a DX7 district?
I believe not.
In fact, is parking generally required in the DX7 district for any non-residential uses?
Objection, way beyond the scope of direct examination.
It goes directly to, A, he testified virtually as a zoning expert, particular knowledge and appreciation of cannabis, and testified as to parking being part of the problems here. It's absolutely relevant.
He was not offered as a zoning expert. To suggest so is flat-out misleading the board, and every witness mentioned parking because it's a problem.
Yeah, overruled. Keep going, Counselor.
Are you familiar with the amended statement of objection that you filed on Monday?
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. In it, there's recitations of, but you talked about the standards, that's okay, we don't have to go into that. You indicated this evening that this violates the standards or does not meet the standards for a special use, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you made mention several times about the cannabis exclusion zone, is that correct?
I did, when I was allowed to.
Would the city, in your experience as a zoning attorney, couldn't the boundaries of that cannabis exclusion zone have been drawn differently?
Objection. She raised gigantic objections about this on direct, you don't get to go into it uncross.
Sustained. Let's stay away from the boundary.
You compared this site to other, better locations for cannabis dispensaries. Is that correct?
I don't know if they offered a specific location.
Well, you attempted to discuss 60 West Superior, didn't you?
Well, that, there's a difference between attempted to offer, where she raised an objection, it was sustained, you don't get to go into it uncross.
Agreed.
So, in your representation of other cannabis dispensaries, your firm represented a dispensary at 216 West Ohio, is that correct?
I believe, I believe so.
Do you know what that site is zoned?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
Would you be surprised if I told you it was DX7?
Objection, form of the question. It's good for the goose, you can't object to it and then bring it in to cross.
Yeah, sustained.
What was the base, what was the basis of the objection, I apologize? I'm sorry, I didn't get the, the basis of the objection, I didn't hear that.
The objection was already sustained.
Keep going.
You stated today that this special use is incompatible with the character, hold on, just a little bit more specific. You indicated the proposed special use was incompatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design. Is that correct?
No, I don't think I objected to that standard, no.
Okay, all right, I apologize. So, you agree that it is compatible?
I have no opinion on that standard, Counselor.
Okay. You did state that the proposed special use was incompatible with the character of the surrounding term, area in terms of operating characteristics, did you not?
Specifically, traffic generation? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You don't have a background in traffic consulting, do you?
No, I don't.
Did you, why didn't you retain a traffic consultant?
Objection, calls for attorney-client privilege and thoughts and impressions of the litigation and what the attorneys might have said to the client. I'm instructing the witness not to answer.
Oh, give me a break. I mean, they have made traffic the issue of the night.
Let's just leave it that they did not hire a traffic expert.
Fair enough. I will... Fair enough. I will leave it at that. You're familiar with the state law banning cannabis dispensaries within 1,500 feet of one another, you're not?
I am.
Okay. And isn't it true that if this application were approved, your parcels within this area would not be able to establish a cannabis dispensary there at those locations as a result of the 1,500-foot radius?
Well, my property is in the exclusion zone.
In the event that was modified? Just answer the question.
Objection. Calls for speculation. She's now talking about modification of a topic that she objected to talking about in the first place.
No, I did not bring the downtown exclusion zone in. I asked him specifically to answer that wouldn't the 1,500-foot rule bar an establishment of a cannabis dispensary at his properties?
He's in the exclusion zone and they're talking about amendments to a law that doesn't exist, or don't exist.
I didn't ask to amend. He can answer the question.
That's what I understood you'd be asking, Counselor, is that, I'm understanding you'd be asking that if they, and, or if they contract the exclusionary boundary, then that's when your question comes into play, right?
Yes. Are your parcels within 1,500 feet of this site? Can you answer that question?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Okay. We are going to take a seven-minute break. We're going to reconvene at 11 o'clock. We're going to go to our, our public comment from the objectors. I'm going to start with the six people who are on the phone. I'm going to ask you to identify yourselves and then we're going to find, confirm that you're on our list of registered witnesses. And we're going to go from there. And I'm just going to remind everybody again, please do not repeat testimony that has already been given. We've covered everything from traffic, we've covered the park, one way, we've covered the closure of rush, we've covered the difference between sworn security officers and non, we don't need to cover any of those things again, okay? So we're going to reconvene at 11 o'clock and then we're going to move efficiently.
Thank you.
Can the person sign in as V. Sergio, identify yourself? You have to unmute your mic. V. Sergio, I need you to identify yourself. V. Sergio, I need you to identify yourself. You have to unmute your mic.
Hi, I'm here. Hello?
Yes, and your name?
Grace Sergio.
Oh, Grace, okay. Let me rename you so I know that, who we're talking to here. Because I know you had signed in earlier, correct?
Yeah, but I'm off.
Okay, let me, let me rename you. I'm going to put Grace Sergio so we know that you're on here so that you can speak, okay?
I'm Mr. Murphy's, got it, okay, all right.
You had a question, Ms. Bixler? You have to mute your mic. Eleni Bixler, you can, you can speak. Eleni Bixler, okay, there you go. Do you have a question?
I have nothing to add, no.
Okay, well, we'll get to you so that you can comment. So just, we're going to go down the list here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we are going to reconvene this meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Sol is here, Commissioner Esposito is here, and I am here, so we have quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your patience. I'm just going to repeat one last time. If you start repeating things that are said, I'm going to conclude your testimony, and don't leave before we give the applicant's counsel the opportunity to cross-examine you. So we're going to start with 309-648-8989. Will you identify yourself for me, please?
Hello, can you hear me now?
I can.
Hi, my name is Tyler Mansfield and I live at 1120 North Lake Shore Drive.
Ms. Teresa, do you have her?
What was the first name? Your, your first name again, ma'am?
Muted.
You're not muted, you can speak.
I thought I heard Tyler Mansfield.
I did too.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, I do. I have a Mansfield, but not the first name.
So you have Sean, my husband?
Correct, I have a Sean Mansfield.
Okay, I will defer to him representing us. He's also on the line.
Okay.
But I don't know why you call him.
No, that's okay. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and again, if it's something new, please.
I don't have anything more to add than what's already been said, but I just want to voice my opposition for the project.
Okay, I appreciate it. Ms. McGuire, do you have any cross-ex?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mansfield, okay. Next, we have 309-696-7530. Can you identify yourself for me, please?
Yes, my name is Beth Akerson. Can you hear me?
We can, yeah. We're just looking to confirm that you registered on time. Did you register under your name?
Did I register my name?
Under your, under your name, right? No husbands or other people next to you?
No, under my name.
And it was Beth Akerson?
There's no R, it's six letters, A-K-E-S like Sam O-N, 1120 North Lake Shore Drive.
Ms. Teresa, do you have her?
I do not.
Would you have put it under Elizabeth or just Beth?
No, it's Beth.
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have you as registered.
Okay, well, I'm going to voice my opposition regardless.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we're going to go to And you unmute yourself so we can hear you. 312-208-7977. Okay, next up is 312- 961-6664. Can you unmute yourself and identify yourself for us, please? Okay, next up is 312-20, we did that one already, 615-972-0602.
For some reason, Chairman, this number is not allowing me to enable them to talk.
Okay, next up is 773- 612-9303. Can you unmute yourself and identify yourself for us, please?
Can you say the number again?
It's you, 773-361- Sorry, 773-612-9303.
Yes, this is Suzette Ross Bulley, and I oppose the pot shop. I have three kids and I don't want them to be around people smoking and waiting in line and smoking pot. They can do that in their neighborhood.
What was your name?
Suzette Bulley.
Okay, perfect. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you hang up, Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think our last phone number is 773-858-6860. Can you unmute yourself and, and identify yourself, please? Okay. Then I'm going to just run through the rest of the list, and if we have you, we'll bring you in. So Alan Zretchny. He's still here?
No, Chairman, he's not.
Alex Sidlacki.
Not here, not here.
Amy Foran. F-O-R-A-N.
Not here.
Not here. Andrea Schwartz, S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z.
Not here.
Angela Miles, M-A-L-E-S.
Yes.
Perfect.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Awesome, okay, I just, um-
Wait, wait, before you go, do you swear to, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I absolutely do.
Okay, then can you identify yourself and give us your address too, please?
Angela Miles, 50s, Bellevue.
Okay, take it away.
Okay, great. So I was listening to the testimony earlier about the studies that were done about crime, but they failed to mention a year study that was done in Denver, and what they found was that crime isn't higher in the immediate surrounding areas, but- but adjacent areas. So the properties beyond where the police are looking or where they have this alleged staff that they talk about, it's 84 more property crimes per year happened in Denver. They did a similar study in LA with a marijuana shop, and the same thing happened. It's not the immediate area, but the outside area, so beyond the borders of what were mentioned in the studies. Also, I know parking was brought up a lot, but I would have preferred that they did a year-round study on parking. I don't think it was a thorough study. The reason why you keep hearing about it is because we've all sat on Maple trying to get through. I also wanted to mention that at no point did the Farm Can people talk about the people themselves. They never talked about the neighbors. They didn't, it's like they didn't even take that into consideration. And I also wanted to mention that Ms. McGuire mentioned that there was a hearsay about the police, but that was proven during a Lori Lightfoot, the mayor, Lightfoot had a press conference, and she and the police officer admitted that the Chicago police are overwhelmed. And when the looting recently happened, and when we had the shooting recently, the police right now are overwhelmed. Those words were said on TV, so that is not hearsay. It is absolutely the truth. And I'm also wondering, at the beginning of the meeting, I thought someone said this has already been approved for our areas. This pot shop is already approved. Is that true?
No, it's subject to them getting a special use.
Okay, because I'm sure that a lot of this happened before we were walking around the stores boarded up in our area and trying to keep up with looters that the police cannot keep up with. And I think now that it's been mentioned on TV or on this webinar, whatever you want to call it, that this business wants to make $25 million, that location now becomes a prime target for looters.
Ms. McGuire, you want to do any cross-examination?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miles.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, keep going.
So this area, as you've heard tonight, has been considered a world-class neighborhood, and everybody wants to be proud of the Gold Coast area. It's an area that is shown on TV when there's a big football game. Everybody wants it to be amazing. I don't think this is going to help us continue to be amazing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and also, let's call it what it is. This is a drug operation, and drug dealings are going on in that shop. Thank you for your time.
Angelo Angelov.
Actually, Chairman, the next one available is Anne Marie Condit.
Angelo, Angelo of Anne Marie Condit, perfect. Let's bring her up.
Ms. Anne, you have to unmute yourself. She's been here since dawn noon, I guess.
It's kind of, you have to unmute yourself so we can hear you. You should find a button with a mic. All right, let's go next.
Next one available is Cheryl Mazey.
So there's no Ann Stern?
I, yeah, I checked all of them.
Yeah, there's no Arthur Herbst, there's no Ashley Keller, there's no Barbara Pollak, no Bill Berry. Who's the next one on your list, did you say?
Cheryl, number 39.
Ah, okay, so no Beto Bostrom, no Bonnie Ribet, no Brian Conroy, no Brian Thompson, we did, I suppose. Bridget Barham, Carolyn Drosmango, Carolyn Bevan, Catherine Zucker, Kathy Pradel, Celeste Kirchner, Cheryl Mazey, was it? Yes, perfect.
I'm here.
Perfect, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you give us your address, please, and then please give us your testimony?
Actually, I live at 4250 North Marine Drive, but I am the property manager of 50th Bellevue, which is in the exact location of this, and I manage the building of 140 units. And I will say that there is a security concern as well as I'm concerned about the parking, and they did address the traffic, so I don't want to continue to break that up because with this traffic, with the street closures, and Bellevue's like a one-way street, it's closed off at the end, it does present a huge concern with the increased capacity of the people coming into the neighborhood utilizing, going and utilizing that area.
We got that one. We got that one.
I mean, and actually, as far as listening to the residents, they are definitely concerned about security, so I just, that's all I would like to state as far as representing them.
Got it. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Cheryl Worzynski? Christine Barry?
The next one, Chairman, is number 43.
Christine Barry?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Christine, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, we're going to keep going. Ladies and gentlemen, when we call on you, you're going to have an option to unmute yourself. So please pay attention. Koby Gaines here?
Uh, no, we have number 46.
No, Colleen Creighton Constantine Yanelli? Yanelli?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I swear to tell the truth. I'm an assistant professor of finance at the University of Chicago Booth School of Business. I have a PhD in economics from Stanford, and I have several academic publications in real estate finance in leading journals, so I want to talk a little bit about the academic literature, my characterization of it, and how I believe Pharmacan's so-called experts, I don't think any of them had a PhD, mischaracterize it. But before I get into that, I'm a little bit concerned that some people are not being given the opportunity to testify. My mother actually is here, and if you're going alphabetical, her name was Anne, and she received an email from Victor, but she was skipped over. Her name is Anne Villamil, so just please check that. Um, so the witness, Mike Wolin, he testified that he could not find academic studies claiming that cannabis dispensaries had negative impacts, had negative impacts on real estate prices. I mean, perhaps it's true that he could not find these studies. That simply means that he did not do a thorough review of the academic literature, which again may not be that surprising, given that I don't think he has a PhD or credentials in academic research. I want to refer you to a very recent study in real estate economics, a leading journal in the study of housing economics by Justin Tindall, and this studied marijuana dispensaries. It's said getting high and low prices, colon marijuana dispensaries and home values, and I'm quoting from their abstract, which reads that they find evidence of a negative price effect for homes located within 100 meters of dispensary. I mean, so I think this is one of the latest studies and the best studies, and this finds negative impacts on real estate prices, which is very consistent with the NAR survey that was mentioned. I don't want to go over again some of the studies that were mentioned by Angela, like the Hughes study at the University of Colorado, which found that marijuana dispensaries did indeed increase crime in Denver. This echoes the findings of the California Association of Police Chiefs, who again found that dispensaries were associated with increases in crime, which I find particularly concerning, given the very sharp uptick in crime that we've seen throughout the city, and particularly in the Gold Coast. I live at 51 East Division, and there was a shooting two blocks from me last night, so I'm particularly concerned about increases in crime given the academic literature. As an academic myself, I was truly dismayed by the way that the witnesses of Pharmacan mischaracterized the academic literature. It's simply flat-out true, so flat-out not true, that studies do not find that there are, that there are no negative price effects on the home prices of cannabis dispensaries. There are studies that find this, like the one I just mentioned. I'm very happy to go into detail if you want to discuss any of these studies and the problems with some of the studies that don't find negative price effects. Basically, the issue is they're not controlling for trends properly. There also, I mean, the literature is somewhat mixed on the crime effects, but a number of recent studies, such as the Denver one, do find that dispensaries increase crime, and I think this is obviously very important in terms of the second criteria, the general welfare of the neighborhood. Of course, if home prices drop and if crime increases, this will deteriorate the welfare of the neighborhood and of the city in general. So the Pharmacan witnesses talked a little bit about the positive tax benefits of the dispensary, and I think they're making a fundamental flaw in their economic analysis. They're thinking only about the partial equilibrium, meaning that they're only thinking about the taxes paid by the dispensary. But if home prices go down, if business revenue is hurt at nearby restaurants, as many people said this would happen, this will certainly lower tax revenue, and it's almost certain that these much larger effects on a large number of homes and businesses are going to outweigh the very small effects of one dispensary paying additional taxes. So in my view, it's clear under the second criteria, as you've heard many people say, and I think there's a very clear consensus in the community that this dispensary is bad for the community. So in my view, it's very clear that this facility should not be allowed under the second criteria, the general welfare of the neighborhood. So thank you, thank you very much for allowing me to testify, and thank you for staying up so late and allowing us to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Yanelli. Can you clarify two things for me really quickly? One is, I didn't get your address?
51 East Division.
Perfect. And then your mother, I believe you said, is on our list. This is not an alphabetical list.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Yep, and Ms. McGuire, you want to do any cross-examination?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanelli. Next, I have Brenda Swanger.
Not here, Chairman. We have number 47, Cynthia Levine.
Cynthia 11.
Actually, it's Matthew Levin. I don't know if it's the same person we can ask. Who's, who's? Up here is Matthew Levin.
That is Levine.
Oh.
We don't have, so I'm going to keep going through my list then. No Cynthia 11.
48 is number next.
Cynthia Podmazerski, Podmazerski, we have her, perfect.
She's in twice, so.
Unmute one of your, one of your logins, please. We can't hear you until you unmute. Okay, we're going to keep going. No Daniel Romano?
No, the next one we have is number 57.
No David Kent, no David Oxtaby, no Diane Quadman, no Dimitar, Dimitar.
Diane Quadman is the...
Okay. Anne, you've got to unmute yourself. Perfect. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
I do, yeah, thank you.
Can you, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Say that one more time?
You swear to tell the truth in this proceeding? Okay, can you give me your name and your address?
Diane Quadman, 129 East Bellevue.
Okay, please go ahead and give us your comments, again focusing on...
One comment regarding Mariano Park. It is, you are, you are allowed to smoke in Mariano Park, which is two doors away from this 12 West Maple. Now, we go down to the park on occasion, and sometimes there's one or two smokers. Oh, well, you feel sorry for them. Now, those people, if it's 300 or 1,000 people a day going to make a purchase at the pot shop, they might be having, you know, a decent low day and want to go over to Mariano Park and just enjoy St. Donna Park and smoking their pot. So if there's 100 smokers in that park, I don't want to breathe in what they're exhaling, and it's going to look much different than one or two or non-cigarette smokers having 1, 2, 10, 100, 300 smokers at Mariano Park. No one has mentioned that particular situation.
Okay.
FYI.
Okay, anything else on your end?
That's basically important, yeah.
Okay, Ms. McGuire.
And, and, and all those people in this neighborhood would be quite shocking, and I don't wish them bad business. I just wish they would open somewhere else, which has a parking lot and bigger space.
Got it. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex?
That's it, thank you.
Hold on before you leave.
Nope, it's only been 10 hours. It's only been 10 hours. Aren't you exhausted?
Okay, thank you, Squidman. We're going. Dimitar Angelov? No.
Chairman, the next one is, well, we just did Diane Quadman, Donna Honder.
Okay, so no Donald Yoggins, no Donald Lynn, no Dorothy Wonderlick?
No, well, we're at Donna, number 62.
I don't have that.
Donna Honder.
Yeah, that's not a, I don't have that as the registered appropriately, on the registered appropriately list. The next person I have is Dorothy Wonderlick.
No, we have number 66 then.
So no Dorothy Wonderlick, any Doug Leek or Lake, L-E-I-K?
No.
What about Douglas Switzer?
Yes, he's up next.
Hello, Chairman, this is Douglas Schweitzer, 50th Bellevue.
Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do, thank you.
Perfect, please proceed.
Okay, one thing I don't know that's been brought up yet is too many buildings in the neighborhood are becoming non-smoking. I live at 50th Bellevue, and a non-smoking building, even, rather than residents aren't even allowed to speak, smoke inside their own apartments. So I bring that up as being out of character to the neighborhood, whereas the residents are moving in the direction of not smoking in this neighborhood. Also, I don't know how you classify this property. It was marked as unclassified in the zoning study. The Ruth Page Center of the Arts is a dance school for pre-K through 12. It's within the 500-foot distance of this property. So I don't know if that qualifies as a school. That's a rhetorical question. Perhaps the board could ask that question of the applicant. And then I think it's very interesting, their security plan. The patrol goes across Maple and all the way a block north to Elm, and then half a block to the west and half a block to the east, but the patrol does not go to the south, any further south than Bellevue. And I'm just curious if that patrol is truncated, because that would encroach on the 500-foot area around the school, and they're sending their employees into the school area would be a virtual extension of their business into the school zone. That's another thing I think the board should consider. Those are my three points. into the school zone. That's another thing I think the board should, should consider. Those are my three points.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McGuire, you want to do any cross-ex?
Nope, no, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Switzer.
Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, next up, we have Dr. Anne Villamil. I believe we were discussing earlier, perfect.
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Perfect. Can you give me your name and address for our record and then please proceed?
Yes, my name is Professor Anne Villamil. I have a PhD in economics and I live at fifty-one East Division Street.
Okay.
So I'd like to speak to two of the criteria. The first I'll talk about is the last, which is pedestrian safety. People have talked about the uh, how short the street is and that it goes into state, and I just want to emphasize that that's a big problem. I also want to note that uh, my alderman noted that the neighborhood is eight to one against it, and I think uh, some of it is things like pedestrian safety. And now let me talk about uh community welfare, neighborhood welfare. Uh, one of the things I'm very concerned with is, of course, crime, uh, traffic, parking, all of these issues that we've already talked about, but I'm concerned about the unique character of the neighborhood. The Gold Coast is something very, very special, and I actually live in one of the historic houses, and I'd like to speak to the Ace Hardware Store, uh, and I'm glad that uh, the owner of the store uh came to speak at the meeting. So that's not just an Ace Hardware Store, it's a neighborhood store where I can go for products with staff at the store who understand these old historic homes and can make very, very useful uh recommendations. And so when we talk about things like it's a very small street and there are parking problems and they're gonna have difficulty getting deliveries, there's a very good chance that that store goes out of business and that will be a real loss to the community. On the other hand, cannabis is a standard commodity. It can be sold anywhere, uh, and we can find another location for it. So I would urge both the committee uh and the, the zoning board to take that into consideration. They can be located in another place. Whereas this historic character where we have stores uh and restaurants that have long histories here are really part of the unique character, and I think it's one of the reasons tourists and certainly come to the city to see these beautiful neighborhoods and, and it's a wonderful thing about living here. And if we lose that, it's gonna be very hard to get it back.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, any cross-examination?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Doctor. Next up, I have Dr. Dan Orata.
We have Kendra Orata, so it's cool.
Yeah, let's, it's O-U-R-I-D-A?
Yes.
Let's promote her and see if that's the same person. You have to unmute yourself, please.
And just so next one can get ready, it's Edward Stevens.
Okay, before we get to Mr. Stevens, I've got Dr. Richard Lieber, is he here?
Uh, no.
Okay, Edward Stevens?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Uh, can I get your name and address, please, and then please proceed?
My name is Edward Stevens. I am a homeowner at eleven-twenty-two North Dearborn, part and parcel of the residential neighborhood that this cannabis dispensary purports to be in. I'm, I'm sorry, I have a procedural question for you. Um, I, I would like to address a question, if I can, to some of the board members. Um, i- is Mr. Sam Toya here?
You cannot address questions to the board members, you can to the applicant's witnesses.
Publicant's witnesses, I would like to, I would like to, as a part of a procedural manner, inquire as to why Sam Toya and Sylvia Garcia recused themselves and did not inform the uh, the homeowners as to the reasons that they recused themselves. Can I get an answer to that?
No, I'm gonna keep moving on to that, that's not really
Okay, okay, so I, I understand. I wanted to make, I wanted to make sure that was in the public record that two members of the board did recuse themselves.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So um, I would also like to speak, everyone, simply to bring about the uh, the issue of how many, how the Pharmicon company reached out to people in the neighborhood to try to ascertain, like we all are, whether it is in the interest of public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood community. I have seen five, count them, five gentlemen, smoking cannabis in public since the legalization. I would appreciate the help of Pharmicon to help ensure that this doesn't happen in, you know, in the future. I want to impress upon everybody that the residents at eleven-twenty-two do not support this. We think that this is a, we, a fine idea of cannabis, but we already have two dispensaries in the River North area. This one has too much traffic and I would appreciate that uh, that the board already having the, already having supported part, prime, excuse me, already having supported two cannabis dispensaries in the River North that this third one will not be supported.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, do you want to do a cross-examination?
Apologies, uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Then uh, Ellen Zickman is my next person. We have Ellen Zickman here.
Uh, no, Chairman, the next one is, oh yes, Ellen Zickman is here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Of course. Um, I apologize. I'm sure I would have been a little bit more eloquent earlier as we all would be, but thank you for staying on. I will do my best not to reiterate any of the, the significant points that have already been raised. I am happy to be able to represent, as I'm glad to hear, some other neighbors. I live at ten-thirty-five North Dearborn. For those of you not familiar, I'm the coroner of Dearborn and Maple. I've been in the neighborhood probably twenty-five of the last thirty years. I've been in this building since the get-go, two thousand and seven, with three babies. I now have three teenagers, two of which have bedrooms on Maple facing the proposed site. So obviously, um, I'm not a fan. This, you know, I'm hearing a lot about, well, is this one an expert on parking? Is this one this, an expert on this? You know, I think we know in any situation, the people that really have a lot of knowledge are the ones on the ground floor. The, the business people here, the residents here, um, we don't need any of those experts to know what's going on in the neighborhood. I mean, this neighborhood is filled with people walking to their local Starbucks, to their local, I mean, the, the local businesses, not anything else. I think that some of the um, representations of the neighborhood appear to me as a resident to be a little misleading, um, especially with the mixed use. I mean, a lot of these buildings that I saw on the map that were deemed as mixed use, no, those were high-rise residential buildings that happened to have a dry cleaning or a manicure downstairs. I mean, yes, technically, there's a commercial space, but it is really a residential neighborhood. Um, that five hundred feet line, it looked like went straight through Oak Street in the middle of the street. Uh, if the proposed site was across the other side of Maple, yes, it wouldn't have happened, right? And as a, a resident and I'm driving by all the time, um, at pickup at Ogden, for example, those kids are all over the place on the other side of Oak Street. It's, it's really is just so, so close. Um, I can tell you that I have spoken to a lot of my neighbors about this. People are sort of in disbelief, like, I think a lot of people just didn't, didn't think they had to act because they just assumed that there would be no chance that this would go through. It just didn't seem plausible at all. And I was telling people that, no, it really, you know, we really could be or whatever. They were all shocked, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna stick you to the criteria, please.
Yeah, okay, so uh, uh, my point is that there is a lot of residential support um, to oppose, I guess, or residential opposition for this here. We just, this is clearly a destination store, right? You have to have an appointment. So it's not like the walk-by traffic is gonna be helpful to them, like it is, for example, Urban Outfitters. So I just don't understand why it needs to be here, not saying I'm anti the cannabis, but put it in the commercial zone. And this, I think that the conversations, and I've been on as much as I can this whole time since it started too. Um, and I think the conversation has been largely the, you know, the east side or the commercial side or the business side, but the residential side is huge here and it's not to be overlooked. Um, I also agree with some of, I, I, I think that some of the points made about the crime studies and the property values, I, I also think that there's a lot of holes to be picked in those and I would not take them for, for, you know, what they were said out of context. I apologize. I know I'm rambling at this late stage and not talking as smoothly. But I, I, as I was writing notes about all this stuff, there's, a lot of this is taken out of context and, and I don't think that we should necessarily count them unless there's a lot more data that we know about each of those. So anyway, I'm gonna stop babbling, but I, I just wanted to show a lot of opposition from, from the residents, the people with families that are walking their dogs all the time, that have kids in the neighborhood. That's not what we moved in for. It's not what we pay our tax dollars for.
Thank you, Ms. Zickman. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I have Eugene Morris. Is he here? No, Eugene.
We have Eva Chess.
Okay, Eva Chess is next. And if you would just unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, and thank you very much. I have nothing further to add at this point.
Perfect. Can you give me your uh, name and address for our record?
Eva Chess, fifty East Bellevue.
Perfect, thank you very much. Next, I've got Francis Olyric.
Actually, Chairman, we don't have quite a few. After that, we have number one-one-three.
I'm gonna run through the rest of them. Frank Kern is not here, sounds like. No Jeffrey Hurt. Okay, no Grant Kaufman. No Harriet Wigode. No Henrietta Beliklone. No George Bruha.
Chairman, we do have Harriet.
Harriet's here?
Yes.
Let's call her up.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Hi, I just want to say I am definitely opposed.
Wait, 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 before you keep going, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
And can you give me officially your name and your address?
Harriet Wigad, fifty East Bellevue Place. Um, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-two or ninety-three, um, before Tavern on Rush, before Gibson's, I think it was still Street, um, Sweetwater when I, when I first moved in. And I've seen a lot of changes in this neighborhood. And we are teetering, we are in trouble. Um, I don't feel safe ever and I don't think adding a business like this will improve the situation that's going on now. I think this is the wrong time and the wrong place. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, any cross-examination?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, no Henrietta, we discovered George Bruha. No George Bruha. Okay, Elaine Sizner. No Elaine Sizner. Howard Sims. No Howard Sims, Howard Scott Silverman, I'm assuming. He's not here, Hunter Shank. No Hunter, Irene Remo. Irene, Iris Yurmac. Iris Beth Wile. Isabella Berry. We did Jenna, Aleah, Jennifer Lansing. Jeremy Eden. I see Jeremy Eden.
Hi, it's Jeremy.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. And if you could give me your name and your address, then please proceed.
Jerem- Jeremy Eden, E-D-E-N, like Garden of, at ten-forty North Lakeshore Drive.
Okay, go ahead and give us your uh, your testimony, sir.
Okay, I have nothing factual to add, so just wanted after ten hours to uh, add my support to the purported eight-to-one figure. I don't know if it's accurate, but it feels right to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we've got Jeremy. This, I presume, is Jeremy Melnick, who we already heard from. Next is Joe Huang.
Hello?
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay, can you give me your name and address and then proceed?
Uh, my name is Joe Huang and I live at fifty-two East Cedar Street, about seven hundred feet away uh, from the proposed site. I live with my wife and my four-year-old daughter uh, that I plan to enroll in Ogden Elementary School. Uh, I, I just wanted to make a point. I think one of the Pharmicon's witnesses had indicated that the residential properties in the area, they're all insulated from commercial activities by a parking garage, if it's a condominium building, condo that, uh, a parking garage on the first floor or something like that. I live in a walk-up uh, single-family home, so I'm right there. There is nothing insulating me from the commercial activity or from looters if looters decide to descend upon the area. Um, but I, I just wanted to say that it's my belief that the ordinance that allows cannabis was also drafted to protect the general welfare of the public. And the ordinance does that uh, by two methodologies, uh, two, two areas that I think was, we should highlight. Uh, number one is that the ordinance does not allow dispensaries in residential zoned areas or even mixed-use areas except the downtown DX designation areas. Uh, but on the other hand, they also excluded most of the downtown district with the downtown exclusionary zone. Uh, so for the most part, downtown is protected, except for our little pocket here that's kind of not protected by the exclusion zone. Um, but we still have residential uses. Uh, the residential zones, zone purely for residential to the east is only four hundred feet away. I'm seven hundred feet away from um, this proposed site. So if I were to send my daughter to Ogden, she'd be walking past this place all the time. Um, there's a lot of single-family homes, two flats, three flats to the east of the property. Uh, and surrounding areas, there's a lot of uh condominium buildings with a lot of residents. Um, and then, so that's one telling issue is that uh, it excludes residential area in the zone. That's how they're put, or in the ordinance. That's one way it was designed to protect us, was to protect residents. The other thing that they did that to protect resident or to protect the public was that they disallowed dispensaries uh, within five hundred feet of the school. Now, I know we're not supposed to talk about this five hundred feet zone, but I would like to talk about something else instead, which is the six schools that are within walking distance of the proposed site. We've got Ogden to the south, five hundred twenty-four feet away. That's a two-minute walk. We've got Peyton High School to the west, fifteen hundred feet, a six-minute walk. Uh, we've got Ruben Salazar Elementary School, twelve hundred fifty feet to the west, five-minute walk. Cornerstone Academy, twelve hundred feet to the west, a five-minute walk. Latin School, uh, point eight miles or thirty-five hundred feet to the north. That's a fifteen-minute walk. And Francis Xavier Ward Catholic School, uh, which is two thousand feet south, uh, right on Chicago Avenue, uh, which is an eight-minute walk. So the ordinance was designed to protect minors. And here we've got this proposed location right in the middle of all these schools on every side, except the east, because there's a lake on the east, so they could, obviously didn't have a school on the east. Um, marijuana is a danger to minors, so this ordinance was designed, the intent was to protect minors and residents. And by having this dispensary here, uh, whether or not it complies with the, the rules, ordinance exactly, it goes against the intent of the rules. Uh, that's part one. Part two is the locations proximity to parks. We've got Mariano Park. Uh, everyone's talked about it already, so I'm not gonna go into it.
Yep, I'm gonna, yep, exactly. Let's, let's move to your next one. We covered
But the other part The other part is 800 feet away to the south, a little bit to the south, Washington Park. That's a much larger park. And you could easily go there and just smoke your pot either before or after your appointment time. Also, there's obviously traffic issues. I know a lot of people have talked about it previously, but I, you know, there was a question as to what the exact numbers were going to be. I mean, there was a number thrown out, 1,000 persons or customers per day. And then the counsel for the farmer can said, well, that's just speculation. Well, in terms of that being speculation, their report by their transportation guy, Abuelo, I think, had on page 51, actually, let me double check what the page was. It is on page 13, I'm sorry. There's a chart that says projected peak hour generated traffic volumes, including pedestrians and cycles and bicycles. This says vehicles is going to be about 25%. But it says Saturday midday peak hour, we're looking at 80 people, peak hour, we're one hour. So that's assumed the peak lasts all day, 12 hours, 12 hours of operation a day. You're talking about over 900 people, 900 customers. Now, if you take that and say 18 of them are going to come by vehicles, then you're looking at 216 cars per day. That's a significant uptick in traffic that's going to be in that area. And this is something that the applicant's witness himself had indicated in his report. So I think we need to highlight that and say, hey, this is real.
Yep, let's go past traffic. We've covered traffic. What else you got?
Okay, the final thing I have got is, I believe their appraiser had indicated that, you know, in his report that property values go up in places where there are dispensaries. Well, there's a flaw in the methodology. Number, the most important flaw is it doesn't value the fact that the property might, it's in a, it might be a hot old location, the property value might have increased regardless of whether or not the pot dispensary was there, number one. Number two, would the property value increase even more if the pot dispensary was not there instead?
Got it.
And that's one final thing. I believe the farmer can had indicated that their customers would be in and out in 3.5 minutes from beginning to end. But what about education to their customers about the different types of cannabis, quantity allowed, or the safety? I mean, these customers, a lot of them are going to be first-time users who don't know how to use cannabis. I mean, I don't. So, you know, that's going to happen in that 3.5 minutes? I don't think so. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you very much. John Coletti, we did already. John Podmierski or Podmierski? I know we had a Cynthia. Do we have John separately?
No, we don't.
Why don't we, let's try Cynthia one more time, in case if they're from the same location.
I think they left.
No, I see her. She's still here.
I don't.
They have the same address. For the Podmierskis, can you unmute yourself?
Oh, pardon me. Okay, sorry. Yeah, these are the ones that didn't speak.
Yeah. Okay. Let's keep going then. John Quadman. I don't know if he's distinct from Diane, who we already heard from, if he signed in separately.
Yes, sorry, those are the ones that left.
Got it. Okay. John Dante? John Dante, Jonathan Brodsky?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Okay, can you give me your name and address?
My name is Jonathan Brodsky. I live at 66 East Cedar, a couple doors down from the last speaker, Joe Huang. I want to open by thanking you all for your patience and your time. I don't know if this is the longest procedure in history, but it's got to be close. I don't have specific new things to add, so my comments will be brief. I'd like to open just in the context of talking about my family. I have two daughters. I walked them to school directly in front of the Maple Street. And I'm also a lawyer by training, and I heard a lot of lawyers talking back and forth to each other. I'd like to take a non-legal, make a non-legal comment to make my point about the general welfare of the community. I asked them to think about walking their two daughters to school across Maple as I move from Cedar South, and whether this facility and the description of its security, et cetera, is convenient or going to be an improvement or neutral to, to the welfare of my, of my family. And I think a subjective view, putting the legalese aside, gives a very specific answer that I would pose to all of the attorneys that were speaking today, as well as the farmer can representatives. The second thing I'd like to bring up to the zoning board of appeals is, this is not my first episode with you all. About five years ago, we had a similar situation, really exploiting a regulatory arbitrage that I see similar to here, related to the bed and breakfast industry, where we were inundated by that entrepreneurial activity that was not probably adequately regulated at that point, as the, as property owners were descending and opening up bed and breakfast without permits or without following the regulations. And I appreciated the zoning board of appeals using subjective and objective reviews to make that very difficult from a procedural standpoint on those business folks. I see a similar arbitrage here in that you have a property which is 520 feet from a school, as well as on the border of the restricted area. This was not picked for, you know, a hypothetical reason. They knew exactly what they were doing. And I asked the zoning board of appeals to use its subjective ability to really recognize what's happening here and protect the welfare of the community.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, any cross-examination? Sounds like no for Ms. McGuire. No cross-ex? No, okay. Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Next up, we have Joseph Lansing. Is he here?
Uh, no.
Okay. John Marcello? No?
Yeah, the next one is 131, but you can go with.
Julia Pesek? Julia Pesek. Then June Simoneon?
Yes. He was here.
No more June Simoneon? Okay, Dustin Hogan?
Uh, no. Next one, what I found is 140.
So no Kay Martinez? No Karen Dante? That might be related to the other Dante we had. Karen Herman? Karen Moran? Oh, Karen Wagner? Kathleen Hito? H I T O U?
No.
Kathleen Gaffney? Kathleen Wheeler?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I sure do. Good morning.
Your name and address? Please proceed.
My name is Kathleen Wheeler. I live at 50 East Bellevue.
Perfect.
I'm going to make this brief, I promise, in light of the hour. My husband and I live on this street and we love it. It's a wonderful neighborhood. And as a woman living in this neighborhood, I worry about security and safety for myself and people that visit us. This is a special and unique neighborhood that I'd like to keep this way. And I would, I fully oppose the opening of this dispensary. And I appreciate your time in allowing me to, to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire? Any, no, okay. Next is Catherine Thanos. Thanos?
No, Chairman.
Catherine, let's see. Katie Newberger?
No.
She was probably with the other Mr. Newberger. Okay, Kendra Urada?
Yes.
Hey, will you unmute yourself, please? Kendra Urada, can you unmute yourself, please? Okay, what about Kito Amin?
I'm not here.
Kamal Patel?
Kamal Patel, no.
Let's see. Kristen Isleib, I S L E I B? No, let's see. Laura Sims? Lawrence Fay, F E Y? Lee Cansfield, K A N S? No, Lee. Len Kipnis, K I P N I S?
We have Phyllis Kipnis, I can.
Yeah, that's her.
Oh, there you go. Hold on one second. Two of them.
Okay. The Kipnises, if you could unmute yourself, please?
I think I did, did I?
Perfect, yes you did. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I certainly will.
And are you related in any way to Len Kipnis?
Yes, he's my husband, sitting right next to me.
Okay, Mr. Kipnis, do you swear to tell the truth as well?
Of course.
Perfect. Then if you could give me your address, then please proceed.
20 East Cedar Street.
Perfect. Okay, can you give us your comments on new, new things that we haven't heard, please?
I have nothing new to say. I only want to support fully those who object. We've lived here for 31 years and it's been a wonderful transition from when we first moved in to what it is today. I hate to see it go backwards. And my fear is that that's what will happen. So.
And Mr. Kipnis, same from you?
Absolutely. I, for 31 years, I have agreed with my wife and it's always been the right thing to have done. And if she is against this, the neighborhood should be against it.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Ms. McGuire, I'm assuming no cross-ex on that one. Leo Portnoy? No, Portnoy. Linda Mack, M A C K?
No.
Lisa Zenni, Z E N N I? Lynn? Lynn Lockwood, L L C K W O O D?
Oh, no.
Mallory Dehaven? D E H? Let's see. Marcela Latimore?
Yes.
Perfect. And if you could please unmute yourself? Here we go. Can you hear us? You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Marcela, is your, is your device microphone off? Okay, we're going to keep going. Marcia Slomowicz? Marcia, let's see. Margaret Johnson? Margaret. Mary, Mary Craven, C R A V E N?
No.
Okay. Mary Smithburg? Maria Smithburg?
No. The next one is Mary Olrich, who's not with the dot here, but she was in the word document that.
I'll get, I'll get to everybody who we've got. This is just not in order, so nobody panic. This is not in alphabetical order. Looks like Mary Henri Hayden, H U Y?
No.
Hayden. And I'm just going to remind everybody, if you're signed in, your name should be what you registered to witness as, so we can find you. Arlena Yanni Sidlucky? S I E D? More Sidlucky's? Martin Strauss? Martin. Mary Lou Gorno, G O R N O? Gorno. Maureen Canfield, K A N F I E L D? Michael DeVito, D E V I T O? Michael. Mina Garimani, G H A H? No, Mina? Hey, Nancy Corral, Coral, C O R R A L? Nancy O'Shea?
Oh, hold on, Chairman, let me. No.
Hey, Nathan Johnson?
No.
Nicholas Yanelis?
Yes.
This, uh, this is another economics PhD.
Yes, I'm a professor of economics at the University of Villanueva-Turbana-Champaign. And I came.
Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Of course, of course.
Okay, can you give me your address, please?
Yeah, 51 East Division Street.
Okay, go ahead then, sir.
Yeah, and I came to the Gold Coast two years ago, and we love it here. I must say upfront that if I knew that a dispensary would be near my home, I would never have bought a place. And I want to emphasize the fact that there is scientific evidence based on data and research publications in leading journals. And because I'm an economist, I want to talk about the economic consequences. So what we heard is that the value of properties is going to go up. That's not so. That's a false statement. Research shows otherwise. And also, we heard that the town is going to enjoy more revenues from taxes. Again, that's myopic idea, simply because if property values go down, taxes are going to go down, and the net effect for the town, for the city, is going to be negative instead of positive. Finally, I want to emphasize the fact that if A to one are against of the dispensary, it seems to me that the board should respect the welfare of the people who live in the neighborhood and listen to the people who live there because they know what's best for themselves. Thank you for your patience, being so late, and I appreciate staying with us so late.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex? No? Okay. Pamela Poehl, P O H L? I see Pamela. Okay, Pamela, can you unmute yourself, please? Pamela, if you are still there, can you unmute yourself, please? Okay, we're going to move on to Patricia Kern, K E R N. Any Patricia? No Patricia. Patrick Keane, K E A N E? Patrick. Peter Sprios, S P R I O S? Peter. Bill Stefani? Phil? Philip Emigh, E M I G H?
S T E F A N I?
Oh, Phil Stefani is here.
Correct.
Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Can you give me your address and then please proceed?
6555 North Flumay in Lincolnwood, Illinois. I own Tavern on Rush, since it's very beginning. My point is that I believe that a license is a privilege. All licensees need to adhere to that privilege. So if the residents of this area do not want such a thing, I'm not against cannabis, but unfortunately, if the residents do not want this particular thing in their neighborhood, I'm always very critical of people who complain about O'Hare and the jet noise and so forth. Unfortunately, the, O'Hare was there much sooner than they were, so they never should have moved there. People who live in this Gold Coast area, cannabis was not on their program when they purchased these places and paying these real estate taxes as we are. And I believe that they should be heard. We heard three aldermen today say exactly that. And I think. And I think, considering what the situation is now, and unfortunately, what is going on with a little, some unrest going on in the neighborhood, I think we just need to take a step back and really see where we are.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire, any cross X on this one? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stefani.
Thank you.
Philip Amigh was not here, Phil Kipnis, we did already, Portia Belik-Loundis?
Everyone, we have two people, Christine Berry and Marcella Latimore, I know they've raised their hand, we went through their name, I don't know if they spoke.
Yeah, let's try Christine Berry again.
Go ahead, Christine Berry.
Sorry, my husband and I have been on and off since you guys started, we don't have anything new to add, other than we're in strong opposition.
Perfect, can you give me your address, please, too?
Yeah, one thirteen East Bellevue.
And did your husband sign in separately as well? Did he register separately?
He sure did, Bill Berry.
Bill Berry, okay.
And our daughter Isabella Berry.
Got it.
Except she's two and could go to Ogden, so.
Got it. And she did, in fact, register herself, okay.
She's been listening.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now on.
There is a Marcella Latimore?
Did we get to Marcel already, though?
I don't know.
Yeah, she wasn't able to mute herself.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, let's do Marcel.
Hello?
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do, thank you for your patience and trying me back again.
Perfect, can you give us your name and address officially, and then give us your remarks on the new stuff, please?
Yes, Marcella Latimore, and I live at twenty-six East Bellevue Place. So I am in opposition of this location, not of dispensaries in general. I speak for everyone in the building, Philip Amy, Bruce Haas, Alex Mikos, Mary Kate Loftus, who were unable to be on this meeting at this time. We all oppose this location. I do have concerns with regard to the way that the dispensary will be having people exit out the back way. That particular back alley is also shared with the Viceroy, as well as Velvet Taco and Maple and Ash. So, that includes garbage disposal, all their deliveries. You'll have pedestrians running in and out of the alley. Is it sufficiently lighted throughout? Is there ample space for them to walk in the alley with trucks and whatnot going in and out, including probably the bricks truck that will be picking up all the cash? That's a concern, big safety concern.
Okay, we got safety, what else you got?
That's it, I agree with pretty much everything else that's been stated, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire? No, okay, thank you very much. We established no Portia Belik-Loundis. Radha Parekh, P A R E K H, correct? Oh, Radha, okay. Then Ralph Gaines, A I N E S, Ralph? Randy Jackson?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, Randy, can you unmute yourself, please? And if you're still there, perfect, do you swear to tell the truth?
Hello?
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Perfect, can you give us your name and your address officially, and then give us your new comments?
Randy Jackson, seventy-six East Elm. My new comments are that, and this is the cynical side of me after twelve and a half hours, but that Pharmacan's position on this is that they seem to need Gold Coast more than we need or want to have them. I think this would increase and improve the portfolio of real estate addresses, and they could use that to their advantage with more deals going forward, and I don't like the sound of that, but again, that's what I think, and again, I can't pile on to all the other opinions that have been made, so I agree with the whole of them, so thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. McGuire, any cross examination? Okay. Perfect, then Reagan Burke, B U R K E, is next, and I see Reagan.
My gosh, hi.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
I do, okay, perfect, then, you know the drill, name, address, and then the new stuff, please.
Reagan Burke, one thousand North Lake Shore Drive. And my fear is that there will be a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood, because professional thieves will flock to where they think the cash is and target pedestrians outside the Pharmacan private patrol area on adjacent streets like mine, thinking we're walking around with pocketfuls of cash or pocketfuls of pot, which will put vulnerable pedestrians like me at risk for increased assaults and purse snatching. And also, I want to say I'm seventy-four years old and I live alone.
Got it, so we got safety. We got safety, you got anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Perfect, Ms. McGuire, any cross X? No, okay, thank you, Ms. Burke, good luck with your book release. Richard Lorio? L O R I O? I O R I O, sorry, Eorio, Eorio. No, Richard?
No.
Okay, Ricky Greenberg? No Ricky? Robert Laquercio, Laquercio? Robert? Robert Mednick? Ronald Brodrer, B R O D R A? No, Robert, Sir Ronald? Okay, let's see, Russell Wonderlich? Russell? Robert Condek? We had another Condek, too, right? Okay. Sam Gutilla, Gutilla, G U T I L L A? Sam, okay. Sandra Warner? Sandra? Scott Gidwitz? Scott?
No scores.
Scotty Kirsta Wilson? No Scotty. Sharon Becker? No Sharon? Let's see, Sharon Hartrick? Hartrich? Patricia Roman Rothman? Patricia Rothman? No, Patricia Roberts Fitzgerald? Okay. Sheila Simonian?
We have June Simonian.
We tried June earlier, right? Let's try, is June still here, let's try one more time? June or Sheila, if you were there, unmute yourself, please? It's like, no, okay, next is Sheila Sunvale? Sunval?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Perfect, name, address, and then your new points, please.
Sheila Sunval, and I live at thirty-three East Bellevue, which is within five hundred feet of twelve West Maple, so I'm very familiar with the location. I've lived here for sixteen years, and I have two teenage daughters. I know you've heard a lot about traffic, so I won't say much, except two new points I want to make. There were some videos that you've probably seen or will review that were posted by FJ Management as exhibits that I reviewed about the traffic on Maple heading east. And I just want to point out, when you look at those, those are very mild examples of what the traffic looks like coming from the west, heading towards my home. And the opportunity, every time a car stops, the traffic gets backed up, and the congestion is much more intense than in the videos on a regular basis. Also, nobody has mentioned the prior tenant that was in the space that Pharmacan is proposing to occupy. And I think it's relevant when you're looking at whether this is gonna have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and on the congestion. That prior tenant, I'm very familiar with, because it was a hair salon that I frequented every other month for twenty-five years. And it was a very low-density space, very little traffic. They didn't have much need for parking, it was a lot of customers who walked to the salon or took cabs. And so, I think the relevant comparison is how a thousand customers a day, whether coming by Lyft, or taxis, or car, is going to have an enormous additional impact on the congestion of that neighborhood from what it's been today, where there's no tenant in there, and the last twenty-five years when it was a hair salon. And no one has mentioned that the idea of congestion isn't just a convenience issue, it's just not that we're all late to work, or late to getting home for dinner. It presents a safety issue. We all experience this in the neighborhood all the time. When you've got a small street like that, that is a parking lot, because nobody can move, people start laying on the horns, getting out of their cars, screaming at each other, and the situation escalates to a very volatile and potentially dangerous situation. And in this day and age, when we're all living on edge, it's a safety issue, and I've called nine-one-one before when there's been that kind of situation in my neighborhood. So I think we want to recognize that it's not just congestion and traffic, but that itself is a safety issue. And then the other comment, I did hear you say at the beginning that we are allowed to testify about how the proximity to schools shows that it does not meet the criteria. And in my view, I have two teenage daughters, they go to school, they walk down this area to get to their school. You've got Ogden, you've got Walter Payton, you've got Latin, you've got other schools. And it will have an adverse effect on the general welfare of the neighborhood, and it will not promote pedestrian safety. One of the reasons they ban a location within five hundred feet of a school, because it does present security issues that children are exposed to, the risk of sales of cannabis to teenagers that are in the neighborhood attracted to the fact that there's people walking out the door with bags of pot possibly available to be sold to them. And the idea that smoking pot in the neighborhood is unhealthy for children and school-aged children. So all of those issues that underlie the reason that the ordinance bans cannabis within five hundred feet of a school are all totally relevant when it's five hundred and thirty-two feet from a school. So I just don't want to lose sight of, and hopefully the board won't lose sight of the fact that those issues are all continuing to be relevant, should be factored in. And then lastly, I just want to say, no one has a crystal ball as to whether crime's gonna increase. Pharmacan says it won't, the neighbors think it will. Even the perception of the neighbors that crime will increase, and the disruption of our neighborhood is going to have an adverse impact on this neighborhood. The stakes are very high. Our neighborhood, the Gold Coast, has been in the national news because of the crime in our neighborhood lately, and the fact that businesses and families are moving out or considering moving out because of what's going on. And the concern is that this cannabis location and the perception of the increased risk could just be the last straw for a lot of people. And like the Alderman, I think it was Alderman Smith said, why take a chance? Why take a chance on this with our community? The stakes are really high for us, the stakes for Pharmacan are low, they can find another location.
Getting a little bit repetitive, thank you very much. Ms. McGuire, any cross X? No, okay. Shirley Cohen? C O H E N?
Give me one second.
Yeah, I can hear her, she's there, Shirley with an S H.
Hello?
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Perfect, name, address, and then your new comments, please.
Shirley Cohen, ten forty Lake Shore Drive. I am amazed that so many people are up and feel so passionate about this. So I just want to say that we love living here, and we absolutely do not want a dispensary in our neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGuire, any cross X? No, okay, Stephanie Harris? I see Stephanie.
Okay, can you hear me?
And do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do, I'm a middle child, though, so that's questionable, no, I do swear to tell the truth. First, I want to thank you all, and I want to thank my neighbors for staying up and supporting this. I was born in the Gold Coast, I felt very lucky to be. I left for a number of years between New York, Boston, San Francisco, and worked very hard to come back here with a young family, to raise my family in the safe and wonderful neighborhood that is the Gold Coast, so thanks to all for being here, I have never seen the neighborhood come together on an issue the way they've come together on this. I can tell you, right now, I live at fourteen-twenty-five North Astro Street, but I've lived at fifteen-hundred North Lake Shore Drive. I've lived on Bellevue, I also lived at thirty West Oak, so I think I kind of cover the area. And I did try to write this down earlier, because this is about the latest, I've stayed up in a long time, and I would say the same, this is better than New Year's for our neighborhood. So I'd like to speak specifically to whether or not the cannabis dispensary is in the interest of the public convenience, and will have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood and community. Blah, 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 born in the neighborhood, returned with my family, et cetera. I am a card-carrying cannabis caregiver. So that is the perspective that I would like to bring to this, I'm a regular patron of a cannabis dispensary. I want to paint you the picture of what it's like when I go. And I go at the off-hours, so I don't have to deal with lines, I've never had to deal with them, although I've been told about them by the people that work there, and how terrible it is for everybody. When I go to my dispensary, I typically race around to find parking, I regularly do U-turns, and what people have discussed is, in fact, very real, there's no parking anywhere, and it's a disaster. And I leave about thirty minutes in advance to try to figure it out by the time I get there. I have to wait around if I find parking, I'm loitering at least thirty minutes very often, even though I've placed my order online in advance. I carry over two thousand dollars worth of cash with me, and when it's my turn, I do stand outside the door waiting to be let in. Again, this all goes to the safety of pedestrians on the sidewalk, I am a rules follower, I do my absolute best, and this is still what happens to me. By the time I'm let in, it typically takes about fifteen minutes to get my order out of the basement, count the cash, recount the cash. At the time I place my order and I have it with me to leave, I'm typically offered security to walk me to my car. I do laugh with the people that walk me out, since I'm a regular, because at five foot seven and three-quarters, and only because it's past midnight, will I admit to being above a hundred and forty-five pounds, I typically am larger than the two people walking me to my car. So I do want to recognize that regardless of what dispensaries say, they are extremely aware that there is a safety issue with what they do. I will also say that on January seventh, my dispensary was robbed. In reference to an article published February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, by the University of Denver, and a copy written by the Academy and copy written by the Academy of Criminal Justice Sciences, they found that neighborhoods with one or more medical or recreational dispensaries saw an increase in crime rates that were between twenty-six and one thousand four hundred and fifty-two percent higher than in neighborhoods without any commercial marijuana activity. It's important to find studies that were not funded in any way by the marijuana industry, and that would have been my question about the data they had here tonight. That is why the University of Colorado study that's also been referenced was so important. The study found that except for murder, the presence of at least one medical marijuana dispensary was associated with a statistically significant increase in neighborhood crime and disorder, including robbery and aggravated assault. In addition, the study, which I will reference later, called Lessons Learned From State Marijuana Legalization, which was reviewed by the University of Colorado, Harvard Medical School, Boston Children's Hospital, University of Connecticut, Yale University, and the University of Kansas. In this, they found that in two thousand and seventeen, the number of court filings charged with the Colorado Organized Crime Control Act that was linked to a marijuana charge increased two hundred and eighty-four percent since two thousand and twelve, according to the Colorado Department of Public Safety. A study funded by the National Institute of Health, NIH, showed that the density of marijuana dispensaries was linked to increased property crime in nearby areas. Researchers found in Denver, Colorado, neighborhoods adjacent to marijuana dispensaries saw eighty-four point eight more property crimes each year than neighborhoods without a marijuana shop nearby. Motor vehicle theft rates, oh, I won't go into that. And then the last piece that no one's. And then the last piece that no one's talked about, so I think I can bring it up, is the problem with driving under the influence. So the other thing I've seen as a patron of dispensaries are people who are in there with me getting in their cars and using the product. I've been doing this for two to three years and probably three years or more. And I do see the patrons using the product in the car. And again, I'm going to go back to that study done and, and let's see, reviewed by the University of Colorado, Harvard, Yale, et cetera. I won't go back through it. In the study, they find that of 2,355 drivers in Washington State, six months after introduction of recreational sales of marijuana, the proportion of daytime driving with drivers who tested positive almost tripled from 8% to 23%. I, I won't go into it, but it goes on and on and on. And what I need to say is, as the parents of two children who walk the neighborhood all the time and go down Maple all the time, the idea that there would be an increased rate of driving under the influence in addition to everything else really takes away from the neighborhood that I fought so far hard to bring my family back to. So, you know, I have lots of statistics on what $25 million at $60 an average customer might look like in traffic. That's been discussed. So I, and I would also like to reiterate that if I were to hire a consultant on our neighborhood, it would be Mr. Colletti. So I would argue heavily that he does have the stats and the data to talk to the issues that you spoke about. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGuire, any cross X? Okay, next I've got Steven, Steven Sederquist. Let's see, Steven. Suzanne Santiago. No Suzanne.
The next one is Trish Rooney.
Tamara Reed, Tamara Reed, no Reed. Tammy Ralph, R U T H. Tricia Else. Elsey, perhaps.
Just Trisha Rooney.
Okay, Trisha Rooney's next.
Hi, my name's Trish Rooney.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I sure do.
Okay, if you can give me your address, please, and, and you know, just the new things.
Sure, I live at 1520 North Astro Street. I'm a mother of four children, I own a business in Chicago. I live in a single-family home on Astro Street. I pulled a petition for Precinct 29. In the Gold Coast, we have 10 precincts for a cannabis-free zone. During the months that I got signatures, I wanted you to know that every single, I, I talked with thousands of people in our, in the Gold Coast neighborhood, and it was overwhelming to me that everyone wanted their precinct to be a cannabis-free zone. We are not against cannabis. We just do not feel, and I think that overwhelming, as you can tell from the alderman and having all of the residents that have signed up to speak today, like me, that people don't feel that this fits in with the character of our neighborhood for lots of reasons. Security, safety. So, and I, I mean, I, I think I can be an expert after the months. I canvassed since March 13th to this week, walking around and getting testimonial signatures and signatures for the cannabis-free zone in the 29th precinct. And I feel like I really can speak to how the neighborhood is really strongly opposed, as you could hear tonight. Thank you for letting us speak today and letting it go to almost 1 o'clock in the morning. It could go to 2. My disappointment is that we couldn't be doing this at normal hours so that everyone could speak. Because I do feel bad when I hear people's names that I've spent lots of time either talking to in person or by phone. Because the state and time has been, you know, postponed, as you know. And people really care about this neighborhood. And this is why I've lived here. I've lived on Cedar Street for 17 years and I've lived on Astro Street for 13 years.
Ms. McGuire, I'm going to ask you to, to focus on the criteria, please.
And I love the neighborhood, and I think so many of the people do. So thank you so much, Chairman and Board. I hope you are hearing what the neighbors have to say on the integrity of the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire, do you want any cross X? No, okay, Trudy Adoba. Any Trudy? No Trudy. Fahid Yagmay. Fahid, Virginia Angelo. Virginia Veronica LaCursio.
Next one is Wesley, Wes Shepherd.
Ward McNally. Wesley Shepherd.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do, and I also want to clarify that you called on Kristen Islib earlier. That's my wife at the same address.
Oh, perfect. Is she with you and still wanting to testify?
She's a little groggy. I can speak for the both of us.
Testify at all?
Let me just shut off my mobile here so we don't get any feedback. I'll, I'll make it really brief. I think Jonathan Brodsky and Joe Wong kind of covered some of the similar issues that, that we have. We have children. I'll add that we will be walking down Maple to our school, which is ICSJ. That wasn't mentioned. That's probably within four or five minutes of the location to the west, one block west of Walter Payton. So that's probably one of our primary concerns that I just, I find it ludicrous that, that we'd be dropping this in the middle of so many schools. Our children also went to St. Chris up on Dearborn, which is just south of Latin, which is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of eight minutes from this location north. And then you've got some schools in, in Old Town as well. So, I mean.
We got schools already, you got, you got some of them aside schools?
What's that?
I said, we, we covered schools.
Okay, I didn't hear ICSJ. So, so there's that. And then there's just the significant investment we've made in a historic landmark on Elm Street. We live at 77 East Elm Street. Work closely with the city and with you guys as well on some easements. And we're just very concerned about the investment we've put in and the safety of our family. And I'll leave it at that, we're extremely strongly opposed.
Got it, Ms. McGuire, any cross X? No, okay. William Downey. No, William. Okay, William Smithburg, no William still. Y I L Ratner Silverman. No Y I L. Eves Fredette, Fredette, F R E D E T E, T T E.
Yes.
Can you turn yours? Okay. Okay, my wife and I are here, so I'm sorry for the call.
Are you both logged in?
Okay. Yeah, so she moved away. So if we can have her come afterwards, that would be appreciated. First, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank you.
Hold on, hold on, before you do that, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, if you give me your address and your name, please.
My name is Eves Fredette, and I live at 111 East Chestnut.
Okay, go ahead there, just the new stuff, please.
Yes, I spend a great deal of time in that park and those restaurants. I probably eat at those restaurants five times a week and I probably go to that park 14 times a week. So I probably spend more time there than in my own house. I want to share my experience with San Francisco and how it affects the lifestyle. So I, I live in a neighborhood here for 15 years, but I spent a group in 2014. And I flew back to San Fran, to Chicago in 2014, August 8. I just wanted out so badly, I, I remember the day till this day. So what happened there in San Francisco is they have a similar park. It's called Union Square. And they have restaurants there and they have retail around. So it's very similar to here. So what happened there is then when you, over there, the pot was allowed. And so what it did is ruined the experience. If you go to a restaurant, there would always be a pot person around, so you could not enjoy your meal. So if this was to happen in the neighborhood, I probably would stop going to Ace Hardware. Doesn't come with a pretty scene, there's all kind of act of buffoonery also. That's another reason why you want to, if you have kids, you don't want to hang out there. That's my experience, it was so bad, I didn't want to live there. So I came back to Chicago.
Got it.
The park and the streets will be overcrowded with pedestrian consumers.
We got that one already?
I think someone sort of mentioned, yes, okay. Are you gonna, instead of four smokers, you're gonna have 40 people hanging out that park. I believe that there will be a developing a secondary market. There's an alley there and the drug dealers will be scouting the customer. They will recruit them, rob them, break into their cars.
We got, we got safety served, we got crime already, what else you got?
Right. The health, another health issue is that technically a lot of these people, they will, what they call hotboxing, smoke in their car. I've witnessed this on North Avenue in the north. There's a dispensary nearby the Home Depot. And we walk in the parking lot, a lot of people are smoking pot and you can smell it, you can't just walk to Home Depot and not inhale it. They spend hours smoking in there. I've seen it here on the street too.
Okay, what else you have?
I'm just going, going over it. So I actually remember the date, the date I left San Francisco. And I appreciate and I will admire you to vote against this project. And, but if not, I would remember August 21st, 2020 as the date I decided to leave Chicago. Thank you so much. I will pass to my wife.
August 22nd at this point. Is your wife Monica?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Monica, you can come here.
Hello.
Hey, come just here for this.
Hello, I'm here.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, perfect. You heard all the stuff we've covered already, so if you've got new territory, please. Or if you just want to, let's come before, that's perfectly acceptable.
I, I'd like to speak to the visceral effect that pot has on me. I'm very to it, maybe I'm the first one to say that. It seems everybody supports it, but they just don't want it on that street. I, for me, I, I would prefer not to have pot in my life. I'm very sensitive to it. My, my enjoyment of the neighborhood would be completely ruined. I go to Ace Hardware, I go to Urban Oasis, they have wonderful massage services there. I would not go there anymore, I would not go to Ace Hardware. I would not walk Maple Street to go to Ruth Page to take a Pilates class or a ballet class. I, I would not go to Mariano Park, I would not go to any of those restaurants knowing that the dispensary was there. I, I just can't accept it. And I work in a retail industry where cash transactions have now become a very large part of our business. And I have seen the impact. I, I believe they're drug dealers, it's drug dealer money. And it is very scary. So viscerally seeing a line of people with cash in their hands waiting to get a product stinks to me like skunk. I mean, they call it skunk. If you like that smell, I don't. And, and it goes, it wafts quite a, a long, like blocks. I mean, you can smell it for blocks.
Got it.
So I don't want to be in the neighborhood, I would just rather move. I do have a friend who's a Realtor for Sotheby's in another state, but she tells me that there are 3,000 units up for sale a day based on the, in this.
Monica, I'm going to stop you on that one, that's a little bit, little bit too far removed.
Okay, fine. But the point is people are leaving in droves. And this is just another reason to leave the city of Chicago and this lovely neighborhood that we've all loved being part of. We don't want the neighborhood to go to pot.
Got it. Ms. McGuire, any cross X? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, I have Sean Mansfield. No, Sean Mansfield. James Lechinger. Lechifer, maybe? No Jameses, one way or the other, okay.
Yeah, Vern.
Vern Browers or Broders?
Yes.
Perfect.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, do you swear to this proceeding?
I do.
Okay, if you could give us your address, and as, as you know, we've covered a lot, so please stick to new territory.
Yeah, my name is Vern Broders and my address is 1434 North Astro Street in Chicago. And I am the president of the Gold Coast Neighbors Association. And so I've been waiting patiently tonight because I am actually speaking for our 770 resident neighbors in our, in our association. And the new information that I have is that we actually have taken a valid poll of our members. We, it's a type of poll where we ensure that it's only our members who answered this. And we had 176 people respond to this poll. And of that, we had a large majority, a 70% majority, oppose the special use application. So there's verifiable numbers of the number, of the proportion of, of our residents who are opposed. I'd also like to, to point out how, I noticed tonight how the valuation expert spoke about how he applied commercial and institutional values to our neighborhood. And yes, it may have been Zone DX7, but I'd like to point out that the DX7 has become rather obsolete in our neighborhood. There are five, count them, five buildings on Dearborn in the 1100 block of Dearborn that are over 20 stories. And across the street from the dispensary application is a 50-story building, Newbury Plaza, all residential, except for that ground floor that's commercial. So I would submit to you that in fact, this, this area is much more residential than depicted on the maps, where it seems to show that it is some sort of multi-use. It's not like a multi-use, like a two or three or four-story building. It is almost essentially residential. Accordingly, we think that because of all those reasons, our members believe that a cannabis dispensary is not compatible with the residential nature of the surrounding area. It's not comparable to the onsite consumption that is true of restaurants. We think it brings in a transient cannabis customer base that's not promoting the residential pedestrian safety and comfort. And we believe it will have an adverse impact on the general welfare of this family neighborhood. So, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners, thank you so much for staying up to listen to my testimony.
Thank you very much. Ms. McGuire, any cross-examination? Okay, Grace Sergio is next. Do we have Grace?
She won't be testifying.
That's testimony from Grace, okay. James Shein, S H E I N. Oh, James. Karen Silverman. Karen, Andrew Kidd, K I D D. Now Andrew, Mary Kidd, no, Mary Olrich or Ulrich?
Yes.
Chairman, we do have James Shein, he's signing his Jim Shein.
Ah, okay, let's do Mary and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Mary, can you unmute yourself, please?
I just did.
You swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, name, address, and then just the new material, please.
Mary Olrich, I'm at 58 East Bellevue. I have been a resident in, in Chicago for over 30 years. My grandmother grew up across the street from us on Bellevue. And my great-uncle was the 42nd ward alderman for over 30 years. And they, my grandmother and my cousins talked about the, the trashy stores on Rush Street, down the street on Bellevue. And, and now this neighborhood has just rebuilt itself. And now you bring in this pot dispensary. And now you bring in this pot dispensary and this is the trashy stores that my family talked about. And do we want this neighborhood to go back to that? I don't think so. So obviously, we are opposing this. And my neighbor, Grace Banks, has been doing her best to oppose this as well. So let's not make this happen.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for staying up so long and so late. God bless you all.
Same to you. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex? No from Ms. McGuire, okay. We were going with Mr. Shein. Did we lose Jim Shein?
I think he's frozen or something, it's not letting me unmute him.
Okay, we will come back to Mr. Shein. Irene Renko, R-E-N-C-O. Renko's, Barb Malotsky, M-O-L-O-T-S-K-Y. Malotsky's, let's see, Stephanie Deegan, D-E-G-A-N. Stephanie, Ronald Gidwitz. Ronald, Michelle Rosen. See, Shelley Cray, K-R-A-Y. Morris Crumholm, K-R-U-M-H-O-M. Margaret Schell, S-C-H-E-L-L. See, no Margaret. Christina Gidwitz. Assuming we also do not have, let's see, Cynthia Swan. No Cynthia. Jenny Brown. Jenny, Jack Brown. Jack, Susan Friedlander. Susan, Diane Hall. And Anne Kimball. Let's see, Rob Bata, B-A-T-A. Peggy Sure, S-H-U-R-E. Peggy. Tony and Lori Munizzi, M-U-N-I-Z-Z-I. Let's see. Let's see, is, okay. Okay, Monica, we did Ian Shalit, S-H-A-L-I-T. Diane Freeman. And Myra Ruttenberg. I see Myra. Did we do Myra already? No, we did not, okay. And Myra, if you're still there, can you unmute yourself? Myra, if you were still there, please unmute yourself. Okay, next up is Christine Bain. Christine, Terry Lind. Terry.
You know, Teddy Chen raises his hand several times with this one.
Chen is further down the list. Arlen Goodman. A-R-L-Y-N Goodman. Joyce Sandler. No Joy. Elizabeth Downey. No Elizabeth Downey. Jerry Dardick, D-A-R-D. I see Jerry Dardick. Jerry, if you're still there, can you unmute yourself? Jerry, if you are still there, please unmute yourself. Okay, next is Renee Asulyn, A-S-U-L-I-N. Renee's. Sinissa Rassburger, I see. See that person? Sinissa, if you're there, can you unmute yourself, please? Okay, next is Gloria Kaufman. No Gloria. Sheila Yessina. Y-E-S. Antoinette Cahill. Not Antoinette. Roz Supera, S-U-P-E-R-A. No Roz. Peter Wong. Peter. Sean Mansfield, I believe I already called. George Markopolous. No George. Donna Hocking. No Donna Hocking. Nancy Murphy. Okay, Nancy Gutfreund. Still no Nancy's Kathleen Gaffney. No Kathleen's. Phyllis Weisbard. God, just kidding, that's, okay, Terry Chen. Got Terry, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi Chairman, can you hear me?
I can. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Uh, yes, but I will let my husband speak for the both of us. And he also signed up for the form for opposition.
Okay, can I get your name then?
Yeah, Joseph M-E-I.
M-E-I, okay, and address, please?
50 East Bellevue.
Okay, then just the new material, please?
Sure. First of all, I am a practicing attorney and I am not representing anybody else, I'm just representing myself. So just for the record. In terms of new, new material, I, I wanna add another aspect to my neighbor Doug, who mentioned earlier in his testimony that Ruth Page is, Performing Arts Center is within 500 feet of the dispensary. And my kid is a, you know, a student at the, the Ruth Page Performing Center. And prior to COVID, she had to walk there multiple times a week to attend ballet classes. And so I would like to challenge, you know, the, the notion that the Ballet Center is not a school, you know, in our mind, it certainly is a school, you know, it's. So my daughter does walk down that, that path on Maple Street to go to Ruth Page. And that is certainly within 500 feet of this dispensary. In addition, my daughter also attends Ogden Elementary. And that is, as noted multiple times, it's 530 feet.
Got it. I do want to just flag that, that, that school is not defined as a school in the zoning.
I understand, I understand, it's not defined as a school, but in practicality, sorry, it's a little late, apologies. You know, there, there are kids, underage kids, minors going to that school to take classes, ballet classes, for example. There are multiple classes designed for, 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 for kids and for young adults. And my daughter does walk down, so I'm only, I can only speak for myself. My daughter does walk down Maple to go to that school multiple times a week prior to COVID. And having a dispensary there would make that, it's, in my opinion, very dangerous to walk down, primarily due to increased traffic, a potential increase in crime and, you know, everything else. Others have mentioned before me. So I, I think those are, you know, those are, our primary concern is, is the safety.
Got it. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex? Okay, thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Mina Yagmay or Vahid Yagmay, I believe I might have called them for. No Yagmays. Okay, Angela Miles, we did. Bonnie Ribet, R-B-E-T. Bonnie's, Maria Smithburg. Believe I might have done, let's see. Maria, William Smithburg. No, Michael Ruchim, R-U-C-H-I-M. No Michaels. Jeanette. Also no Jeanette's. Tracy Brownstein. Tracy's, no Tracy's. Richard Lieberman. Is Terry Cohen? Do we have any Cohens here? Just Shirley, okay. Joseph O'Toole. Joseph Wesley Shepherd, we did. Okay, Alex Sidlucky, I believe we already called, no Alex. Tammy Ruth, we called. Eleni Bixler. I see. Do see Eleni Bixler, okay.
Hi.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Hey, you know the drill, please?
Eleni Bixler, 1515 North Astra Street, Chicago, Illinois. I've lived in this neighborhood for over 30 years. And I strongly oppose the dispensary in our neighborhood. I don't see anything positive about it. And thank you for having this meeting. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak here.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, any cross? Okay, I've got John Lawler. Michael Pearlstein. Michael still, and Wayne Keck or Keek, let's see, no Wayne's. Okay, I'm gonna go one more time.
We have number two or two, Portia Belloc.
One more time through the people who were here, but we are having problems with unmuting. So Anne Marie Kondic or Kondic, K-O-N-D-I-C. No Anne Marie, okay. Cynthia Podmierski. Let's try one more time for the Podmierskis. And I'm gonna name them, why don't you just rack them up? And as you guys figure out how to unmute yourselves, if you're still there, we'll hear you. So next is Dan Ourada, O-U-R-A-D-A. Next is Kendra Ourada. Let's try Kendra again. Kendra, if you're there, or Dan, unmute yourself, please? We did Marcella. Pamela Pole. Try Pamela one more time, unless Pamela has left. Pamela, if you're there, unmute yourself. That's everybody I have. Who did you say were missing? Oh, Portia Belloc, okay. Let's do Portia too. Portia, you there?
I'm right here, can you hear me?
I can. Do you swear to tell the truth in this proceeding?
Yes, I do. I think the biggest thing, the, the problem I have, I'm all for a pot store in the, in the neighborhood, but not on that street. Maple is so congested. I live at 34 East Bellevue. And I have a hard enough time just driving to Ace Hardware Store and doing those things. And I can't imagine. And, and I've gone to small towns where there are pot stores and I, and I bought pot and I wait in line in, in a car. I don't know how Bellevue can, not Bellevue, but how Maple will be able to hold it. So I am opposed because it's just gonna congest our neighborhood even more so. Ace Hardware, all those things. So, so as, as a supporter of a, a pot store, I just don't feel like that street is the right street. Put it somewhere where people can actually get to it. And, and so that's it, but thank you.
Thank you. Can I give you your address too, please, for our record?
34 East Bellevue.
34 East Bellevue, perfect, okay. Ms. McGuire, any cross-ex? No, okay, and then Myra Ruttenberg? Is Myra still here? Let's try Myra one more time. And then Jerry Dardick, I think we had. So for Jerry, Sinissa. Or Myra. If you're here, now is your opportunity to unmute yourself. And hearing none. Okay, then Ms. McGuire, back to you for your redirect. And your closing. You're on mute, Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to closing arguments, given the hour and the amount of dozens and dozens of witnesses, may I suggest that we submit written closing arguments by no later than Wednesday?
No Counselor.
This is not, this is not an endurance test. This is supposed to be a process that's fair to all. And I think that we see by the number of people that dropped off the phone, unfortunately, it is 1:00 in the morning, and you were right, it is the 22nd, not the 21st, that that would be a more fair way to deal with the issue of closing arguments.
No Counselor, we're gonna stick with our process.
Okay.
Counselor, we're doing, we're doing applicant does closing arguments. You have something you want to say for a close?
Do I?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, why don't you go now and then we're gonna go let the applicant finish?
Well, the applicant is the plaintiff for the petitioner, I can, I'll certainly go right after the applicant, if the applicant has a close.
Uh, no Counselor, we're gonna do this on our, our format, is applicant, objector, applicant closes. So if you'd like to say anything else, now's, now's the time, please.
Can you, can you run that one by me again?
Yeah, if you'd like to make a closing statement, please do right now.
No, I do, but the, the process is, my understanding was applicant on an opening and objector if we wanted, and then a applicant close and then my close. If, in the event we want to do a close.
No, applicant always closes in our process.
Okay.
If you'd like, if you'd like to say anything else, go ahead, we'll do it right now.
I will. In, in sum. There is beyond clear and convincing evidence that this dispensary is not wanted by the citizens in the area, the taxpayers in the area, as evidenced not only by the testimony you heard, but also the fact that several hundred people signed up to make calls, but of course, because of the hour in the morning, they were unable to, to speak. Not a single business owner stepped up to support the addition of a cannabis dispensary in this area. Not a single one, other than if you want to include Mr. Lasky, who's the landlord, who's gonna get paid rent by the dispensary. Not a single resident stood up in support of the addition of a dispensary in the area. I believe it's incumbent upon, as, as do the people I represent, it is incumbent upon the board to certainly take into, take into account and give great weight to the testimony of not only the people that it affects the most, which is the people who live there and the people who work there, but also the opinions of the three aldermen who were elected to represent those people. Not, not, it wasn't just Alderman Hopkins, who is the alderman of that particular area, but it is such a strong feeling in that area that Alderman Riley and God, and hopefully everything works out with his family, and Alderman Smith felt compelled to present the testimony before Your Honor.
How do you do that? We think this is what, hopefully will work.
Ms. McGuire, you're back, you're back live, so, okay, go ahead, Counselor.
And briefly going through the testimony of the witnesses for petitioner, we have a valuation expert, and, and again, I, I, I don't necessarily, well, strike that. The valuation expert who in his report says that cannabis dispensaries increase the value of property. He is deposed and he changes his story and says, well, they don't hurt it. And then we dig even further and we find evidence that in fact, it does. So that's their expert. This is the person they paid money to and they hired. We've got a security expert who didn't even talk to the people who are gonna actually do the security at the site. That's not an expert. An expert is someone who deals with the actual boots on the ground of what's going on. And their security expert didn't even talk to the people who are gonna provide the security at the location, whether it's three, whether it's one, whether it's 100. Whether it's three, whether it's one, whether it's 100. They never spoke, they never took the advice. He doesn't know what they're going to do. The security expert didn't even know what the security is going to be at that location, yet they prop him up as an expert. Probably my favorite was the traffic expert who was using census data from 2014, I believe, limited to the Gold Coast. His testimony was very clear. He did not talk to the restaurateurs who can speak very directly as to the traffic, and more importantly, the number of cars in the area. He didn't talk to the valets. He didn't do his own spot checking or spot sighting. He used data from a census from six years ago. And it, within that data, he makes this quantum leap of, because 75% of the people in the Gold Coast will use public transportation to go to work, he will extrapolate that out, that 75% of the people who buy cannabis will somehow take public transportation. That is beyond ludicrous. It's actually laughable. He did not account for COVID. He did not account for basically nobody taking public transportation now. He did not account for the closing of the streets with respect to Rush Street. He did not account for the closing of the streets at the close of school time, or at the beginning of school time, where the parents are picking up their children. The list of things he did not do with respect to his expert opinion is far longer than the things he did do. He Googled it. That's what he did. He Googled it. Did no independent research on his own. He Googled it. Alderman Smith said it perfectly. There is too much at stake here to get it wrong. Okay, you heard from Mr. Thompson about his experience with respect to law enforcement, the limited manpower, the gridlock in the area that prohibits life-saving fire, police, and ambulance care to the residents of the neighborhood. The people who live there, the people that are affected the most. So at the end of the day, the argument is very simple. We are not opposed to cannabis stores. We are not opposed to dispensary. It is the law of the land, and as you heard from many of our witnesses, they are either users or very big supporters. They voted yes. The issue here is, it doesn't fit on Maple Street. The Gold Coast, and in particular, this area, is a delicate balance. It is already overcrowded with respect to pedestrian traffic and car traffic. And to add whatever the number is going to be, divide $25 million in sales by $60 per average, divided by the number of the days in the year, brings us to about 1,100 transactions a day. Now, do I think they're gonna hit 1,100 transactions a day? Probably not. But they're gonna hit a big number. And that brings the extra traffic, whether it's pedestrian, whether it's automobile, whether it's Uber, whether it's Lyft. It brings all that extra congestion to a one-block street that dead-ends into one other busy street without a streetlight. So at the end of the day, it doesn't fit. Not that people are objecting to it, it doesn't fit there. And I forget the name of the witness who said it very clearly. These pharmacan needs this neighborhood far more than the neighborhood needs pharmacan. There is nothing unique about what pharmacan sells. Cannabis is cannabis. Now, there may be different kinds of it, but it's cannabis. It's a common commodity. The Gold Coast is not common. It's everything but common. This is too big an issue. It is too, this is way too big an issue to make a mistake. And again, the support for the opposition is overwhelming. It's a hurdle that pharmacan and their attorneys and their paid experts cannot overcome. So we ask the board, respectfully ask the board, well, first of all, thank you for staying up this late. It's not an easy task, especially on a Friday night. Thank you for that. Thank you for hearing our witness. Thank you for hearing my client. Thank you for hearing the neighborhood objectors. But this is very clear. The evidence is overwhelming. The lack of support for pharmacan is overwhelming. And we ask that the board deny the application.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Miss, well, let me stop. For the board, any questions of Mr. Murphy or any of his witnesses? Okay, Ms. McGuire, you can do your redirects as you please. Let me just get a sense for how many people you're gonna call up again, just so I can tell if we should take a short break or not.
It's three, and we're gonna go very fast.
Okay.
First is Bill McMenamy.
Okay, Mr. McMenamy, you're still under oath.
I apologize for our configuration. We lost one of our feeds. We've heard multiple people claim tonight that this dispensary will have 1,000 customers a day. Let's just set the record straight. How many people are you expecting on a daily basis? And you just heard Mr. Murphy indicate.
Mr. Chairman, we cannot, can you get a little closer? We can't hear.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, I can't hear the witness.
Okay, we will try to huddle together here. Did you hear his response?
No. 450.
450.
And you just heard Mr. Murphy indicate that the average transaction was about $60. Is that an accurate average transaction?
No.
What is the average transaction amount? So do the math. How do you get, if you have 100, you estimated earlier that this could be on the higher end of revenue at about $25 million a year, is that right? How did you achieve that number?
I can't hear what you're saying.
It's the 450 multiplied by 150.
Which is the average transaction, correct?
That is correct. Times seven, times 52. Your answer gets to 24 million. You get 24 million, 24 million five and change.
That's all we have for Mr. McMen.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
I just have, I just have one question.
No.
No, no, we're moving on.
I don't know that Counselor's the one that decides it, but I just have one question.
No. We're moving on. Thank you. Who's next?
Mr. Abuna.
Yes.
Mr. Abuna, you're still under oath.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Abuna. Your study was based on 80 customers at peak, and you found that approximately 25% of customers would drive. Is that correct?
Yes.
So how many cars does that translate to during peak hours?
Would be 18 trips in and 18 trips out, so 36 trips over a one-hour period.
But that's during the peak hours, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So that would be over throughout the day, would be less cars when you're looking at 450 customers a day, is that correct?
That's correct.
Objection leading the witness.
Is the amount?
Objection leading the witness.
No, it's fine. Just overall, keep going.
Is the amount that you've projected for vehicle usage there such that Maple Street cannot absorb this traffic?
It is not, it's gonna, it will be able to absorb it.
Is the methodology that you use to reach your conclusions, is that industry standard?
Yes, it is. And it's generally accepted by Chicago Department of Transportation, where we've done many, many studies over, I've done many studies that have been reviewed and accepted using the same methodology.
And in fact, Mr. Banks has used you as an expert utilizing the same methodology for his clients' projects, isn't that right?
Objection, beyond the scope of any cross.
Overall, it's fine, keep going.
We're used by Mr. Banks' office and many other zoning attorneys throughout the city of Chicago.
And in fact, Mr. Luay, did you Google the results of your, of your study?
No, I feel offended by Mr. Murphy saying that, diminishing the work that we do, but no, this, a lot of thought and effort goes into these studies when we produce them.
Thank you, Mr. Abun. I have nothing further. Our last is Michael Wolin, please.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, may I cross the witness?
No. We're closing up. Mr. Wolin, you're still under oath.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolin, very briefly, what is the, what is your ultimate conclusion in your report?
My report concludes that introducing a dispensary into a neighborhood like this will not have an adverse impact on the values in the neighborhood. That's my first.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Mike.
The conclusion of my report is not that cannabis dispensaries cause increases in property values, but they do not have an adverse impact on them. This is also consistent with the review I did of the four dispensaries, existing dispensaries for a long period of time, Lakeview, Uptown, Logan Square, and Wicker Park, the property values surrounding each of these.
And that was, that is ultimately the legal standard which we are charged with meeting, isn't that correct? That there is no adverse impact?
There is.
I have nothing further of this witness.
May I inquire again, Mr. Chairman?
No. Ms. McGuire, are you closing?
Yes, I have a very brief closing. I really want to start first off by thanking all of you. This has been a marathon session, and we are most, most grateful for your attention to this and patience with it. This site, this use, doesn't fit. That's what we have heard a lot this evening, but in conclusory fashion and without any facts in support. And when you don't have the facts or the experts, you just insult everyone else. That's what we saw this evening. They've alternatively painted this neighborhood as quiet, small, and almost sleepy, or then so congested where any business that attracts any human beings would be devastating to this neighborhood. But each witness was certainly careful to say that this wasn't about cannabis. So main concerns were crime, traffic, and too much foot traffic. As to crime, there was no evidence that this would increase crime. And in fact, pharmacan will enhance this area with a security plan and protocols that exceed state requirements and adding neighborhood control the objectors just stopped at. The traffic expert conclusively established that at peak, there would be about 20 more cars per hour. And they notably did not have a traffic consultant to refute that. As to foot traffic, when did it become a problem for a business to be so successful that it might add additional customers and patrons to area businesses? I'll acknowledge that three aldermen opted to object. But I would note that if these aldermen felt so strongly about this street and how special and unique this neighborhood is, they each could have exercised their legislative powers to make sure that this entire process would be rendered moot. I'd also note that although there are certainly many objectors, it is clear that they virtually all came from farther away, were driven by one or two people, and as evidenced by the presence of two other aldermen than the one of this ward. Virtually no objections from our closest neighbors, and that is very telling here. I'll leave you with this. What felt like about a week ago, the applicant and its experts went through each and every standard with meticulous detail. We met each and every standard supported by fact, by data, by research, and by extensive expertise. We respectfully request that you apply the evidence before you to the standards and respectfully request that you grant the special. Many thanks for your attention.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's patience with this process. I move the convening to closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. For those viewing by livestream, we will return from our closed session, and the livestream will continue at that point. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
And Commissioner Toya is not yet with us, so the motion carries. We are convening to closed session. Corr reporter, are you ready for us to start up again? Donna, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, I move we return to open session. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I also vote yes. We have a quorum, and we are returned to open session. That motion is approved. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional condition read by me. I move to approve Board Calendar 24620S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Here votes I, that matter is approved. I move to approve 24720Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote I, that matter is approved. I move to approve 24820S, 24920Z, and 25020Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
I'm recused on that matter.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Here votes I, that matter is approved. I move to approve 25120S and 23420S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Here votes I on that matter, it is approved. I move to approve 25420S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Here votes I, that matter is approved. I move to approve 25520S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Here votes I, that matter is approved. I move to approve 255, 25620S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Here votes I, that matter is approved. I move to approve 25820S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 25920S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 26020S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 26120S, 26220Z, and 26320Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Absent.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 26420Z and 26520Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Absent.
Chair votes aye, those matters approved. I move to approve 26620S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
No.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Toya.
Absent.
Chair votes no, that matter is not approved. I move to approve 26720S. Commissioner Toya second, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes. Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 26820Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 27020S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 27120S, 27220S, and 27320S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter, those matters approved. I move to approve 27420Z and 27520Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
No.
Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Toya.
No.
Chair votes no, those motions fail. I move to approve 27620S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 16220Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 19720S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 19920Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move to approve 15220S. Commissioner Toya, Commissioner Saul seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Recused.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Toya.
Recused.
Chair votes no, that matter fails. I move to approve the written resolution containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for Board Calendar Number 22020Z and 22120Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's July 17, 2020 regular meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved. I move we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.